Calling the Moore County Board of Education into session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Metcalf, I want you to leave us.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our vice chair?
If anyone will join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's go to our business. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Good morning, board members. Again, I want to thank you for your time and engagement yesterday. We had a great day learning about the work of our schools. And I have no doubt it's going to be another outstanding day today, starting with Ms. Green and Gold herself, Ms. Stephanie Phillips at Pinecrest High School. So we're looking forward to hearing from Ms. Phillips. Just remind the board that today, we've got eight schools. Correct, Dr. Metcalf?
Yes, sir. Eight schools have designed it for each school to speak for 15 minutes and go through their presentation, and then 15 minutes for questioning. Want to kind of move at a quick pace today with the eight schools.
Yes, sir. So it will be a little more of a brisk pace today. But again, we appreciate the board's time and engagement and look forward to hearing about the work. As I like to say, the schools are planning the work, and they're going to work to plan this year towards continuous improvement. So decided to hear from them. So, Dr. Metcalf?
Let's hand it right over to the principal of Pinecrest High School, Ms. Stephanie Phillips.
Good morning, board. Good morning, Dr. Locklear. We're going to start with our mission and vision and our belief statements at Pinecrest High School. At Pinecrest High School, we believe that we will ensure educational experiences inspire students to reach their full potential and lead productive lives in an ever-changing world. And then our mission is to create a supportive and engaging and safe learning environment that builds knowledge and skills and abilities needed for future success. And through that, what we fundamentally believe is that every student can learn and succeed regardless of socioeconomic status, race, or ethnicity, that all staff are empowered to meet the needs of diverse, the diverse learning needs of their students, that we give them the resources and provide those so that students and staff of all backgrounds and abilities can be successful, that students should come to school and feel safe, secure, and cared for, and that we are a partner with our parents and our community and our students, and that we are accountable for the education of all of our students. These are the demographics currently at Pinecrest High School. You'll see that we are about equal in our Hispanic and black populations, Hispanic at 14% and then black at 17%, with our largest subgroup being our white population. This is our overall grade level performance, the composite scores. You will see that we did increase slightly in overall composite, but we did take a hit in three subgroups. And you will see how we address that in the upcoming action steps. For our English two composite, this is where we took the biggest hits. And we have been evaluating this. We've been having conversations in our P O Ts department meetings, school-wide, how we can impact this. And then with biology, we made a little bit of gain from 72.1 overall to 73. Math one, not a lot to brag about when you look at the actual numbers. However, we made gains, and we are proud of that. And we will continue the work we're doing with math one to see the gains we're making. And then we took a bit of a dip with math three. School growth, although we did show some improvement in our growth index, we did not make growth, and that's not acceptable. And we've been having deep conversations about that. And then our school letter grade remained to be, we increased our score by one. So what are we going to do to address these growth areas? Goal one, by June of 2026, we want to close the overall achievement gap by 10 percentage points for students with disabilities, our black students, our economically disadvantaged students, and our Hispanic students. And what are some of the action steps we're going to use to do that? So the first action step, we took kind of a comprehensive approach. The first action step involves our social worker and at-risk counselor. And they're meeting with our counselors and administrative team to review students of concern that have been identified through cross-analysis. We've been looking at attendance data, testing data, and behavioral data. Proud to say that now we can do this in infinite campus much easier than we were doing it. We were using spreadsheets and other items to triangulate this data, so infinite campuses making that much easier. And in this action step, we are also on Tuesdays and Thursdays making regular home visits. And then we are putting interventions in place that we're tracking. Also, for this action step to close the gap, we have focused on a co-teaching model to provide small group instruction and interventions to meet the needs of students with disabilities, as well as other at-risk students. We took a hardcore look at the abilities of our inclusion teachers. We hired an inclusion teacher with a reading specialist background, and we put her in English two. And so she's using that skill set not only to work with small groups, our students with disabilities, but also with our teachers. We looked at our O C S program, and we had a teacher in that program that had a really strong math background. And we approached him about making the move to math co-teaching. So, and then the third action step I wanted to highlight is we are providing quarterly professional development around the learning focus model. And we are also providing professional development around the teenage brain. Our at-risk counselors providing that to teachers. And we're using feedback from the staff and walkthroughs to drive the additional professional development throughout the year.
The teenage what?
Teenage brain.
Okay, that's what I thought you said. I didn't want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Much different than our brain, Mr. Levy. Goal two, by June of 2026, Pinecrest High School will increase their growth index from a negative 3.68 to a positive 2.01 to exceed growth as measured by E V O S. Couple of the action steps I'm going to highlight is we're using a multi-classroom teacher leader to work with our math one team to develop lesson plans, disaggregate the data, and develop effective remediation strategies. Additionally, she's pulling small groups within these classrooms. To go along with that, our inclusion teachers were using a co-teaching model to maximize their supports in English two, math one, and math two. Co-teachers, as I mentioned previously, have been paired to maximize the learning potential within that content area. And then the third goal, by June of 2026, Pinecrest High School will increase its graduation rate from 87.6 to 92. We did take a dip this year in our graduation rate. We took a step back, were very reflective, and came up with the following action steps. During the student's senior year, Pinecrest counselors are going to focus on developing individualized post-high school plans for enrollment and post-secondary institutions, enlistment, and employment. They are already doing those one-on-one meetings with over 500 seniors. We have currently made it through over 300 high school seniors at Pinecrest have had a one-on-one meeting with their counselor. We're having our at-risk counselor meet with and develop attendance plans and behavior plans for all seniors who are on that at-risk list. And then we're continuing to identify students through our cohort data that might have dropped out prior to their senior year. And we're looking at ways to go back, track down those students, and see if we can bring them back in to be a part of the four-year graduation cohort or the five-year. And it's always partnering with our friends at C O C to assist with that endeavor.
Members of the board, questions? Mr. Benway?
Morning. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Could you give me a thumbnail of what the G L P, English two, consists of?
So...
I noticed we had a problem there.
Right.
What does that consist of?
The assessment? Or the actual data for the G L P, Mr. Benway? So, well, for English two, you're looking at a variety of standards that are assessed on the English two assessment. And we did take a dip in almost all of our subgroups. So what we have done is we're meeting with our English two team. We've reviewed that data. We are implementing a variety of strategies with them. We're going back to the standards and making sure we're aligned. We just had our most recent check-in data that we drilled down to by subgroup. And sometimes by subgroup, that may be one student. You can get down to one student that you need to purposely look at, what did I do for that student? What did I need? How can we adjust to better support that child? So those are some of the things we're doing. I'm not sure that I answered just...
No, I think you did. So the P L C has a driving force in this whole thing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so also, our... The co-teacher, the inclusion teacher that we hired with the reading background, that's why we placed her with that English two team.
Okay, great, great. Just one more question. On your home visits?
Yes, sir.
How were those received?
For the most part, positively. I don't think, but we give them a heads up. We try to. But most people, what we're finding is they want the help and resources to improve getting their student to school, helping their student with needs. There are a variety of things that we do. That's why I use my social worker and my at-risk counselor for those home visits. And then we support as needed. The administrative team and the counselor as well support those home visits.
Okay. Thanks very much.
I just want to make sure the board knows what a check-in is. That's provided from the State Department of Public Instruction. It's a benchmark assessment aligned to the standards.
Other board members? Yeah, Mr. Hensley?
Hello, Ms. Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a couple of observations and then a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The first thing, this is an observation, but we had discussions, not you and I, but certainly the board and Dr. Metcalf previously about school improvement plans being in line with the, being aligned with the vision, with the mission and intent of the district strategic plan. And I was very happy to see yesterday that most all of the school's visions and missions and beliefs were closely aligned or somewhat aligned with the Moore County strategic plan. I'm not sure that Pinecrest is quite there because the previous strategic, the previous failed strategic plan that was actually rejected and replaced with the current strategic plan. The previous strategic plan talked about global citizens and ever-changing world. The new strategic plan that's been in place for years that all the schools should derive their strategic plans from talks about successful citizens of the United States. The new strategic plan talks about an equal emphasis on C T E slash V O Tech. So just an observation, I'm not sure that Pinecrest's vision and mission is aligned with the current Moore County strategic plan.
Yes, sir. We did take, when the board, we keep up with all the school improvement presentations each year. And so we did go back, and we did have global in our vision statement. And we removed that as a school improvement team. But that's absolutely something I'll take back to the team, and we'll revisit it again and cross-analyze and look at how we can better align it.
And again, I see elements of it in there. I just, and I said it just isn't as closely aligned. Anyway, enough of that. That's really just an observation.
No, that's a very valid point. We'll take that back to our November meeting and evaluate that.
Another observation, and I mean, obviously, I'm glad you're working on graduation rates. But when I saw the, and this is just my thoughts, but when I first saw the dip in graduation rates, you know, I thought that might have been a result of our emphasis and crackdown on discipline. And, you know, when you, when an organization, not necessarily saying Pinecrest, but when an organization has a lax period, and then you start cracking down on enforcing discipline and stuff, it just doesn't work out for some people. So, you know, there's many factors that could affect the graduation rate. But in my mind, I attributed part of it to, you know, the crackdown on discipline. And, you know, I mean, shoot, we expelled one student, so there's one, you know, reduced graduate. Okay, so a couple of detailed things. On the math one and math three, when is math one administered? And when is math three administered?
For most students, math one is your freshman year, and math three is your junior year. That's for most students, if they're not an advanced student.
Okay. I just, you know, an observation, and I have zero analysis of this, but an observation is, you know, if you look, and if you look, compare and contrast math one and math three results, math one, there was significant gains in the total and across all subgroups. But in math three, after they've been at Pinecrest for, you know, a couple of years, there's decreases across the board. So it looks like, well, I have no analysis of it. Other than the freshman year, math one, there were significant increases across the board. And in the junior year, there were not. So someone needs to look into that. My last observation is, I meant to get with you before the meeting, but it just didn't work out. How do you feel, how important do you believe that providing no-cost or low-cost daycare to school employees, faculty, and staff, how valuable do you believe that would be towards recruiting and retention of your faculty and staff? I mean, daycare is a challenge, and it's expensive.
As a member of the recruitment and retention team, I think there are multiple things we could do to increase recruitment and retention of employees. Having many, we have a baby boom at Pinecrest. I don't know why, but we have. I do know that childcare is...
Well, let's check the biology scores here.
Childcare is a significant issue for many school employees, along with many people in Moore County.
It is.
Yeah, so I do think, you know, that's, I can't imagine the budget line for that, but I do think that you would see a positive effect if that were offered.
Yeah. Were you, you were looking at doing daycare?
Yes, sir.
And just so everybody knows, it's an individual school initiative. What barriers did you face in implementing that? Obviously, it didn't work out.
Well, we're in an older campus, and so a lot of the guidelines to put in place, childcare, as they should be, are very rigorous. And so you have to have kitchen, hot water. I mean, there are multiple, multitude of things. And you have to have a place where you can have an enclosed playground area for those students. So really, it was space is what kind of stopped us in our tracks. But we were, that is accurate. We were looking at the possibilities.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it might be space or regulatory related. It seems to me, and this is a bit off-target, but real quick, it seems to me that it would be a great recruiting and retention tool. It's an individual school prerogative. There's barriers to doing it. There's regulatory, there's space barriers. But it, and it seems to be that if we, if we sold daycare, you know, if we're in the education business, it seems like it would be an easy bolt-on. And if we, if we had an initiative where we help schools work through the regulatory stuff, and we, and we help the oversight of it, then we could have a daycare program that we offer to the public at market rates. And then we use that money to offer free or greatly subsidized daycare to our employees where they work. Anyway, thank you. And again, that's a bit off-topic.
I am very appreciative, I must say, since this is being recorded of us like you and McDees Creek for all they are doing to accommodate my staff for childcare.
Yeah, it, I think we can do better as a district because we are in the business. Maybe we identify schools that do have a bit of excess space, and the central office somehow helps them through the regulatory part because that would be a big burden. Maybe we provide a bit of money to upfit the schools. But if we expanded and had it strategically located physically throughout the county, it would be a great tool.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other members of the board?
I just have something real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I wanted to apologize. I was late. I was actually on another board meeting phone call. So I apologize for that, for being late for your session.
Perfectly okay.
And I know you understand that.
Yes.
And I did want to say too, just to jump on what Mr. Hensley was saying, I did look at your vision and mission, and I did see that in your notes, if you go online, you guys have the minutes, which I thank you for that. And I did see that you guys did change that. I actually, I think they align really well for what you guys are envisioning in your, in your high school. So especially with the we believes, I think those were great. I think you're, you're on the right track, and you're doing a great job. I really love, and I know you always did this, but you know it's in here, that you do those home visits. Those do mean a lot to the parents. I get a lot of feedback on that, that they really do appreciate that, that someone out there is caring for them, other than, you know, you know, the counselor or whatever. So you making a presence to their home is really important. So I thank you for doing that. And that's really all. I just, I had nothing but positive things to say.
And we have always done that. We just are being, we're being more intentional about those visits.
I think next was, oh. Ms. Bruno?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Stephanie. Yeah, I think the home visits, I think that is just, I think that's awesome. And that means a lot. And you really find out a lot about children when you visit their home. I had a question. Do you lose most of the kids or your graduation rate? Do you lose them in your, in their senior year?
No, ma'am. No, we lose them early on. So what we see trend-wise is it's around 16 that we lose students that impact our four-year graduation rate.
Okay, so, so your, I mean, your action steps to graduate the kids are great, but why are we waiting till their senior year for them to?
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Oh, okay.
So this year, this, my counseling team visited a high school in Raleigh, and we had conversations with them. And we brought back the senior meeting, the idea of this one-on-one meeting with seniors. There's, there's a lot more to that one-on-one meeting. And then our next step is to transition that to freshman year. But because what we learned from our visit to Nigel High School, we wanted to make sure we had our seniors where they needed to be. And now the next step is, once we get that solid foundation, is to move to our freshmen.
Okay.
And every student at Pinecrest High School, it's not common for a school our size, every student during registration gets a one-on-one meeting with their counselor during the registration period. It's not virtual, it's face-to-face.
Oh, that's terrific. I'm happy to hear that. I think you do an amazing job. I mean, you have so many students, so much staff, and you're the perfect leader for there.
The older I get, the harder that is.
I don't know. What did you say?
She knows them all. She knows every student that went by.
Oh, I know that. Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, Ms. Bruno, did you, I was wondering about the senior, why you waited till the senior year, but that's a good explanation. And if you would clarify, I believe that you had a math teacher leave either this past year or the year before, which do you attribute, not making excuses, of course, but do you attribute that maybe to your math three drop? You had, you had significant math teacher issues, if I recall. Is that true?
Like many of my colleagues, math is definitely a recruitment concern. And so we have lost staff within our math department. We were very strategic this summer in looking at strengths of our math team and shuffling them around and moving people outside of math one because they worked hard. Like I said, those numbers are not great, but they're making gains. So we did not move that math one team, but we've looked at math two, three, four, and our advanced placement courses, and we've moved some teachers around based upon strength. And we currently still have two math vacancies at Pinecrest High School.
Yeah, you do have to get creative. And that's something with the recruitment and retention. We're learning that people are not going to college to be math teachers. Like, there's a serious shortage of math and science teachers. So it's, it's across-the-board struggle. As you said, your colleagues face the same issue. But thank you. You are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. As you know, I'm a big fan of your Air Force Junior ROTC detachment.
Yes, sir.
How do they stack up performance-wise with the rest of their cohorts?
That's a very good question. And I don't have an exact answer for you. What I could tell you is, is that within the corps, one of the requirements is tracking attendance and grades of the cadets. And they are held to a standard within the corps for grades and attendance expectations. So I don't have an exact answer for you, but based upon that information, one could assume that being in the corps has a positive correlation on performance within the school setting.
Yeah. It would be worth tracking.
Yes, sir.
We'll take you to look at that anyways.
Absolutely.
But thank you.
Any others? Yeah. Just still, let me say this one observation. I want to say that I'm really happy that you're taking on the problem with subgroups because it's really rough to say. But generally, generally, in some of our schools where we have education gaps, the African-American subgroup is half of the, the general population. And at Pinecrest, it's actually, it's actually less than half of the, so it's getting to be around a third of the general population. So it's a very, very, very difficult problem. But one of the things I'm very happy about is that you see it and you're tackling it. I think you're, you've got a rather lofty goal there, okay? So if you don't, but hopefully, you'll meet that goal. And so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you tackling that goal. And I think Pinecrest, which is my alma mater, so I'm very, 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 very concerned about that. And I think Pinecrest, which is my alma mater, so I'm very, 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 very concerned about that. I think you're doing a wonderful job, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Willems.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, appreciate your leadership, appreciate the Patriot Team's hard work, and, and just since you're in front of the board, I'll congratulate Ms. Phillips again, being our Principal of the Year this year, and she's going on to represent us at the regional level soon. So we're proud of her, and we're proud of the work that she continues to lead. Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear.
Jeremy Swafford, not sure there was a roadblock in the hall, I'm not sure. He should be coming right in, here he goes. Morning, Ms. Swafford.
Good morning.
Dr. McCaffrey, right to Mr. Swafford.
Are we standing up at new school or something?
Only time we see Mr. Swafford is when we're moving him to a new school, or we're beginning, he has not applied for the early college position. We're gonna leave him right where he's at, because he's doing a fabulous job. Jeremy Swafford, Principal at West Pine Middle School since, uh...
March.
Since March.
Hundred and twelve days with students in the building.
And he counts that every day, doing a fantastic job, but we'll turn it over to Mrs. Swafford.
Thank you all, everybody, it's nice to be here again. I am proud to be the Principal of West Pine Middle. As you know, I started in March, one of the easiest times to start in a school is March. We were able to get through that with the help of a very experienced staff, great teachers, great students, great support staff, and what, you know, what an amazing school community that West Pine Middle School has. A very supportive group of people, one of the most supportive groups I've ever been involved with. This year, our theme of the school year is Excellence Happens on Purpose. This talks about the commitment to our intentionality of the school improvement process. What becoming a truly great school like West Pine Middle is, it takes purposeful actions for everybody in the building. At West Pine Middle, we talk constantly about high expectations, and what that looks like in every classroom around the school. And when I talk to students and I talk to teachers, we talk about the Wildcat Way, which is roar, which is respect, own it, awareness, and responsibility. We talk about that with all of our students all the time, and how much we are expected at that school to be one of the best schools in the entire area and one of the entire state. So that is a constant conversation with our students. Now with our mission and vision, it was realigned about two years ago. However, we are going to relook at this mission and vision after Moore County Schools goes through their process. We're going to take the time to revamp this. This was originally about six years ago, and then it was revamped a little bit, but we're going to take a strong look at it and redo it completely to reflect the changes in the school population and the changes in Moore County Schools. So you can look at it, but I'm going to say we're going to change it starting in February. With our demographics, you'll see that seventy-one percent of our population is white, twenty-nine percent of our population is minority. We have eight percent black, twelve percent Hispanic, two percent Asian, and seven percent multiracial groups. You'll notice that the scores are basically flat from 2022, 2023 school year to 23, 24. There was a small drop of one point. You'll notice a general trend of improvement through, since 2020 school year. That was the COVID year, you had the norm, which was before that, then you had the COVID drop, and then you see a steady climb out of it. Now we're back to historical norms when it comes to our grade level proficiency. Now the challenge is to make a new norm, which is above those that have been historical. Our biggest area of concern, you'll notice, is our students with disability, which was our lowest performing area, and had our biggest drop from the previous year. You'll notice our black population actually was our highest that it's been in five years. As we continue with the idea of being purposeful in what we are doing, we have drilled down into the iReady data. We've already identified that some of our biggest issues when it comes to that data is vocabulary and then informational texts. The challenge at West Pine Middle is that seventy-seven percent of the students are at grade level or approaching grade level. So these students are very high already coming into the school. So attacking those areas is what we plan on doing, specifically raising the rigor in each classroom at the school. And you'll notice that in a number of our action steps. GLP and reading was basically stayed the same between the two years, it was a point one drop. Our math scores dropped by one point eight. This could be contributed to experience levels. Our ELA teachers are very experienced and have been together for a while. Our math teachers, most of them are fairly new to the, to teaching in general, but fairly new group of teachers. So you'll notice a lot of our action steps seem to address our reading performance, because historically, reading has been an area where there needed to be a little bit more action steps to be involved. However, when you're talking about vocabulary, you're talking about reading comprehension, and you're talking about reading fluency. So if you attack those areas, that also helps your math scores, it raises both ships, is what happens. A point of pride is our science scores. Almost ninety-two percent of our kids were proficient in science. This was the highest it has ever been in the history of West Pine Middle. All subgroups achieved the highest proficiency rate that they have had since testing started. So we are very proud of those scores. There'll be a new test in science, we've already started addressing that. Our science teachers are some of the most experienced in the county. The two teachers who were directly involved with these scores also helped write the unpacking for Moore County Schools, and they are on the forefront of, of, of creating the curriculum documents for the county. We encourage all of our experienced teachers, which West Pine has a lot of, to be directly involved with curriculum development as much as possible, so they can get ahead of the curve. So we're very happy and proud of those scores. An area that we want to look for and look at is our growth scores. Traditionally, West Pine has not been consistent with meeting growth. We want to address these issues over the next two years, and basically, we're going to do that by trying to raise the rigor level in every class, because growth with high-end students sometimes takes a different kind of teaching, and you have to hold kids accountable to high expectations in order to get the growth out of them. But traditionally, West Pine Middle gets growth once every three years or so, and you can see the trend of the last five years. Now for our first goal, by June 2026, West Pine Middle School will have an increase in overall grade level proficiency and subject grade level proficiency by ten percentage points, basically from seventy-three point one to eighty-three point one overall. And then your reading score, seventy point two to eighty point two, and math from seventy point six, seventy point six to eighty point six on the North Carolina End of Grade Test. Now our action steps, I've talked already a little bit about vocabulary. We're going to enter, we're going to implement a comprehensive vocabulary program that we're going to initially drive through our intervention process with our social studies teachers. It's going to be done during our war block with about a hundred and fifty kids. That will target those vocabulary skills, not for our lowest performers. They're going to be working individually with teachers in small groups of ten to fifteen. This is going to be our next level, those kids are right there on the bubble, who might just need a little bit of a push to move into proficiency level. We're also going to target our social studies and, and science teachers, where they're going to create a comprehensive plan around informational texts. Traditionally speaking, ELA takes on the informational text side of the teaching, and now we're going to make sure that our social studies and science teachers, which this is a natural fit for them, will use informational texts at a high level. One of the things we're going to implement, because ironically, I have a lot of new social studies teachers, and we're going to push in the DBQ project, where students will take active role in learning history, where they'll analyze documents around historical events, and use that in a context of writing. And then all subject areas will conduct vertical alignment PLTs, develop writing rubrics, and make common graphic organizers that will be used across all grade levels and subjects. This is where we're going to use our experienced teachers to mentor and help influence our younger teachers, and show them how you can increase the rigor in your classroom. Research shows that the easiest way, and simplistic way, to increase rigor in the classroom is through adding in complex writing pieces. Doesn't necessarily have to be a five-paragraph essay, there's any number of ways to do this, especially with vocabulary terms. Gone are the days where we give kids ten vocabulary words and say, copy the definition now. Now we're going to utilize that in a, in a connected paragraph, using all of the vocabulary. But that is something experienced teachers know how to do, and they're going to help our younger teachers. Our second goal targets our subgroups. West Pine Middle School, compared to the overall population, will close the overall achievement gap by ten percentage points for all subgroups. Blacks from thirty-two point nine to twenty-two point nine, Hispanics from ten point eight to zero, economically disadvantaged from seventeen point five to seven point five, and students with disabilities from fifty-three point, fifty-three to forty-three, and English language learners from thirty-five to twenty-five. Some of the areas that we're going to focus on, we're going to institute the Positivity Project, which is a character-building program, and we do that once a week. On Monday, teachers do a short lesson, it takes about fifteen minutes. And then the teachers use the theme for the rest of the week. For example, teamwork was our most recent one. They did a small lesson on teamwork and what it is like to be part of a team, and then they reinstitute that we are a team at West Pine Middle. It's simple, however, it gets everybody together on the same page. We will identify and track all subgroups of the MTSS process. Progress will be tracked and supported, and will be provided to students who might need it with interventions. You don't know what a student needs unless you have the data that supports it. So we are now going to officially track our subgroups in order to ensure that they're being successful and provide them the exact supports that they need during our intervention block. And then teachers will receive personalized PD and challenges they may face with classroom management, focusing on early career teacher support and utilizing knowledgeable others to improve classroom management. Once again, this is where we're going to use our experienced teachers. Our AIG teacher has taught at any number of schools, and she's going to push into our BT classes. And in order to support our AIG cluster groups, which we have a large population of AIG students, so she will go into those classes and work directly with co-teaching with the BT teachers to ensure that they raise their rigor level to, to what is needed at West Pine Middle. And then our BT lead teacher is going to push into our middle-of-the-road classes, which would not have, which would not be an inclusion class, and go teach with those teachers on a regular basis. Once again, supporting BT teachers from both ends, high-end and those middle-of-the-road students. And our final goal, West Pine Middle School will increase growth from negative two point two eight to positive two point oh one, to exceed expected growth. This is a very important goal for me. Growth is one thing that we can affect every single year. Proficiency is the whole body of a student's work and what they've done up to that point, but growth is what we do as a team each and every year. So we can affect that, so this is a very important goal to me personally. In our three action steps, administrators, a group of teachers, will attend professional development on the Writing Revolution book. It is, Ms. Gephardt has done a great job. I just attended the first session as we dive into what this looks like in the Writing Revolution. We did this session on October fourteenth, and we had our initial group of administrators and three teachers there to experience it, we're going to expand that. But basically, what this is, is how do we incorporate writing in not only ELA, but in social studies, science, and math even? And what does that look like? The Writing Revolution book gives us kind of a framework, gives us examples of how it looks in each subject area. No longer, I like to tell, talk to teachers all the time, everybody is a literacy teacher. Doesn't matter what subject you're in, everybody's a literacy teacher. And we, we say that all the time to them. We will investigate high-yield instructional strategies, develop a professional development plan and learning-focused partnership for the next school year, so that teachers can improve their instructional toolbox. When we dive into this road about what rigor looks like, learning focus is a great tool to use to help move staff. They have an entire half-day professional development that deals with writing to learn, which is very good, and they also have a, a great session that deals with raising rigor in a school, which is something we have to do at West Pine Middle to make sure our students grow. So we would like to incorporate that on a regular basis with our staff. And then last, we will incorporate writing across the curriculum as a high-yield strategy, and common rubrics for the writing will be used across grade levels and content areas. Professional development laws be provided in these areas. We want to create writing rubrics. What is a student in sixth grade, how do they need to write versus what they need to do in eighth grade? The rubrics won't change except for the complexity of what's in it. So students will recognize the rubric, but added pieces each grade level, because you expect more as they grow and the, the expectations become higher. So that's what we're going to use our teachers to do, and it's something that they're going to get behind and buy into.
More complex book reports?
All right, any questions?
Oh, boy, could I start?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Jeremy, kudos to you, I could give you a standing ovation. Absolutely awesome. Everything you're doing is just amazing. Your vocabulary program is that you, you just specific, what? Oh, Bob. Okay, you, you specifically said your vocabulary program for social studies is, explain.
Sorry, I could go into more detail. The, the program itself is called vocabulary.com, we got it approved by CNI. It's, I've used it in Connect, and it was very successful for those students. So it's a program, but we're going to use social studies teachers. Typically, the model is ELA teachers handle all that. No, what we're trying to do is incorporate every single subject area into the intervention process. And for this particular one, social studies teachers are going to be trained. And then during the war block, we're going to, each one's going to have twenty-five students that they're going to work directly with using this vocabulary program.
Okay, that's terrific. What else? You said document, you're going to write about documents around historical events.
Yes, DBQs, Document-Based Questions.
Okay.
So what that basically means is that you will, and it's commonly done, and experienced teachers do it anyways, but you, you take a question. What, what started, what started, what are the causes of World War One, right? So you list about five documents, it could be a newspaper article, article from that time period, it could be a political cartoon from that time period. The students will analyze, and one of the most common ways to analyze it is through SOAP, which is speaker, occasion, audience, and purpose. Purpose, yes, thank you all. We've got some history teachers over here, too. But you take that, that acronym, and then you analyze each document, and then what you do is you pull them together into coherent writing passage. It forces students to become active learners instead of passive learners. When I first started teaching history, long time ago, a lot of it was just lecture-based, and students will tune you out. So we want to turn that around, flip it, and make it so that students are actively engaging with material.
Okay, that, that's absolutely terrific. I, I loved your vocabulary in connected paragraphs, thought that was really good. And, oh, your positivity project, that's, that's excellent. And I love the way you said, this is an important goal for me personally. Because when it's personally, you're going to do it. I, I really like that. Is, now, Writing Revolution book, is that an actual book?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good book, it's, I don't know, three hundred pages, if you want to read it, but...
Well, I do, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask Donna if I could take a look at it. Thank you.
And Donna's the expert, and she is, we've started the process of that, and how we're going to integrate that into the school.
Okay, yeah, Don, I would love to look at that. The other thing is, everyone is a literacy teacher, oh, that is so true. And, and I, it's coming, everything that you say, it's coming out that this is what you're doing. And this is just, I, I'm, and writing across the curriculum, I, I'm very impressed, Jeremy, you are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Great, are you happy? It sounds like you are.
Yes.
Yes?
You know, it's a great school, I cannot complain, you know?
But it's so different than what you were doing.
It is, you know, each one has their unique challenges.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I like, I like challenges.
Okay.
You know?
Very good.
Mr. Hensley?
Thank you.
I had nothing to say until you said, and I want to make sure I got this quote right, you said, "Every person is a literary teacher." Is that what you said? You say every person or every?
Every teacher's a literacy teacher.
So let me, we need to write that down and consider this for upcoming new strategic plan, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. The United States Marine Corps is successful in fighting and winning wars because of the mindset that every Marine is a rifleman. It, it creates, every single Marine officer enlisted goes through the same infantry training, whether they're a pilot, an attorney, a cook, a truck driver, it doesn't matter. Because when you say every Marine is a rifleman, it puts complete emphasis and focus on the mission, right? So that is extraordinarily important, and, and it's led to the... So that is extraordinarily important and it's led to the success, it's led to the mental frame of mind that creates success. And I think that when we come, when it comes time to rewrite our strategic plan, something along the line of every team member is an educator. Educator might be too strong of a word, but the fact of the matter is every single person in our school touches a student and affects their lives. Whether they're a bus driver, a custodian, a teacher, an administrator, it doesn't matter. We need to create a frame of mind in Moore County schools that every person here is an educator. Maybe not an educator in a traditional, you know, teacher, certified staff. But boy, that is a, that's an awesome frame of mind to, anyway. That's all I have. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cola.
So, as we know, and I talked about this a lot yesterday, our pre-ACT scores are low throughout the county, but also throughout the state. So what I love that you're doing is you are putting the informational text into all units because that was the weakness in a lot of what's going on with the pre-ACTs. And that's just going to help build, like I said yesterday, it's going to help build block our high schoolers. So I thank you for that because I think that's, I think that's needed in pretty much all middle schools to do that. And Crane's Creek is following your footsteps on that. I also loved, and I have a big star around it, your third bullet point on action, or goal one. The vertical alignment for PLTs is just like a chef's kiss to me. So I thank you for that too. It's, yeah, anyhow, it's, you don't see that often, so I really appreciate you doing that. And anyhow, that was just all I had, but yeah, thank you.
Mr. Benway.
Thank you. Hi, Mrs. Swafford. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Early on, you said that you were pretty satisfied with the caliber of student you're receiving. Is that correct? Is that a correct statement?
They're coming in at a very high level and we've got to raise our level.
Great, exactly. And what kind of liaison do you establish or maintain with these feeder schools to anticipate what's coming in?
Yeah, being fairly new, having only started with three months, I'm very connected to the principals. I know them very well, have conversations with them. We receive all their data beforehand and we already have, what we do is we have basically a data spreadsheet that we share with all the principals and they're giving us, this student needs this support, this student needs that support, this student might need to be away from this student. So we're in those discussions about what individual students' needs are. But we plan on expanding that as I become more embedded into the school.
Sure. There might even be the notion of some transition team effort in between them.
Well, and we do do the parent night. We do bring students in. Last year, we brought them in in April. We do bring the parents into before school ends so that they can already have faces to names. They can already be familiar with the school. So, yes, all the fifth graders. We have this transition for fifth graders. We also bring the fifth graders back two weeks before school starts to do our Jump Start Program is what we call it. We do a whole day where we're doing different activities with the kids. And we have, we had almost two hundred kids show up out of the two hundred and sixty-two, somewhere around there, of rising sixth graders. So we do practice all of those.
Great. Just one more question. Based on your experience with Connect Academy, et cetera, how is that flowing into your new job, if at all?
It is. It's a very different learning environment, but looking at situations are very similar. You attack problems in very similar ways, but how you answer those problems are different. When you've got a kid behind a screen versus a kid in front of you, I can interact directly with that kid on a regular basis who's struggling. So my ability to deal with situations on a quicker basis, if that makes sense, is significantly different at West Pine Middle compared to Connect where it takes more time to deal with individual situations.
Great, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
You may not have an answer for this and that's fine, but my thought was toward what, Mr. Benway, your high-level performance to begin with. Do you have a lot of children, are the demographics, are they coming from our feeder schools or are they first-year Moore County Schools military children? What do you attribute the high academic level coming into, if you can?
We've got great elementary schools. I can only say kudos to them. I spent time at Ponder's Elementary myself. Great school. It's what, eighty-seven percent proficiency. West End Elementary, I think, is eighty-three percent proficiency. And West Pine Elementary also has a high level of proficiency. It's just good schools surrounding it. They are good schools, doing great jobs, and that's all we can say.
I wanted you to say that.
We've just got to match that rigor that they have, you know.
Good answer. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Swafford, I look at your science scores and I look at the almost no achievement gap. It's extremely high science scores and almost no achievement gap with African-American students and the overall population. What are you guys doing right?
Experienced teachers. I'm not going to say otherwise because that's what it takes. The group of teachers has worked together for over a decade and they have jumped on the curriculum writing for the county. They've done everything as a group, as a team. It's just that's the kind of atmosphere it takes, is time sometimes.
Okay. The other thing that I want to make sure you know is that what I've been admiring of yours is you have, I think, what the military calls, I'm not a military person, but the military calls it command presence. And when you just come into a room, you, and I think that's what makes your school so successful. You command the entire, the entire thing, the entire area. So I congratulate you on that ability. When I was in, when I was taking my teaching license, one of the first things that they said was, every teacher's a reading teacher. But you're the first I've seen to actually internalize that in the schools. You know, it wasn't just, not just an academic thing, so thoroughly, thoroughly appreciate that. And lastly, what I am noticing is that more and more principals are emphasizing writing, physical writing. Am I right? And one of the odd things is, that's one of the things that this board has been emphasizing. And we've taken a lot of grief, I've taken a lot of grief, for book reports and I sometimes kid about that. But we looked and we wanted to do physical writing. And it looks like that's what's happening. And that seems to be the trend now, so kudos to you, kudos to the board for not just reading books, but doing book reports. And I just, I think the board is impressed by you and your school. Just let me say that.
Thank you, Mrs. Swafford. Appreciate your hard work, your leadership. Appreciate the work of your team and we're looking forward to seeing what you accomplish this year. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I won't tell a joke this time.
We appreciate it. You're following directions. Next up is Mr. Matt Moore from High Falls.
K-eight.
Welcome, Matt.
Our first K-eight presenter.
Yeah. I think the other one is right after. How are you all? Doing well? Good. All right, well, of course, we are a K-eight school. Would like to say that our numbers, at least in my time, are higher than they've ever been. We are up to two hundred and ninety-five students total, which is a significantly higher number even than last year. So got some new ones, some new faces moving to the area, so that's pretty exciting. I'll open with that. It's pretty exciting. All right, so we can get started with our mission and vision. Sorry about that. Thank you for the remote. All right, I'll highlight a couple of the bullet points in just a second. But of course, our vision encompasses belief, most promising strategy for achieving the mission of High Falls is to develop our capacity to function as a PLT. You hear a lot about PLT time. I know you guys are not blind to the fact that that is a huge component of what we do as a district. And it ebbs and flows what the focus of your PLT is. It really evolves over time. Quite frankly, we took a dip this year. I'm going to own it, our people own it, they already are owning it. But that caused us to have to do some reconfiguring and thinking about what PLTs mean to us and what the purpose of PLTs are. So I'll preface with that just a little bit. So that's why we kept that component in our vision as a key piece. Working in collaborative professional learning teams. And here in the middle, these bullet points, I like to call, they're kind of, I'm a sports guy, Mike knows that all too well. I kind of call it what we're trying to go for as a triple crown for us. Design and teach, essential objectives daily. That's your alignment piece. You got to look at your alignment. You got to look that you are on pace and that you are dead on and spot on with the skills that the kids are needing to acquire. Provide swift intervention when students are not learning. That is a huge piece for us this year. That'll tie into some of the MTSS work that I'll speak to in a little bit. The third one, provide, oh, sorry, demonstrate a power, a personal commitment to academics and developing positive character traits in students. I forgot the middle piece, monitoring student growth and learning. Again, all of that goes hand in hand into MTSS and the work you do. Looking at data, being very analytical with data, having conversations about individual students. And another one of the key pieces that I think is an advantage to be in a K-eight school is that you can get down to the kid level more. That's something that, you know, yes, we look at cohorts, yes, we look at subgroups as a whole, but it really comes down to individual student conversations. Our mission, the High Falls Elementary K-eight school family will provide a safe and nurturing environment where continual growth, continual growth, not jumps and starts, which we saw a little bit of a jump, you know, jumps and start this year. But we want to have that continual upward flow of growth in academics and character is ensured for every student. Our beliefs, all students can learn and will grow in that growth piece. Students will feel safe, respected, encouraged, and valued as individual learners. And staff will support students in being respectful and taking ownership of learning and actions. And of course, that, another key piece of that is relationships. And again, I hearken to, you know, we're fortunate enough, we have kids for a long time. We have them for nine years, in most cases, aside from new students who join us. But you really have time to get to know students and you get to build relationships with students. Even before you may have them in your classroom, you still get, you know, we try to leverage that. We try to make sure that there's that sense of family in our place. Our overall demographics, not a lot of change. Our white subgroup is obviously our largest group, eighty-seven percent, followed by our Hispanic subgroup, we're at nine percent. That's about twenty-six students for us this year. Multiracial students, two percent there, one percent black, I think that's down just a click, maybe from two, and then one percent Asian. And there's the tail of the tape. So again, saw some dips there. If you look at the very end, we are a little encouraged with our students with disabilities is a very slight uptick. I mean, three-tenths of a point, but we, one of our goals has been to continually narrow that gap. We'll talk about that later. So that was the subgroup that marginally made a little bit of an increase. But our Hispanic students dipped slightly, fifty-four point one to fifty-two point eight. But if you look, going back to the COVID years there, well, you can look at the top line. If you look at the top line from eighteen nineteen, of course, very, very little gap, very little gap with our Hispanic students and white students. The COVID year was, the aftermath of COVID, we saw a dramatic drop in that subgroup and continuing into twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three rebound was pretty substantial. There was the lessening of the gap there. And then even though they dropped, if you look at the white subgroup for twenty-three, twenty-four, even though it's, they both went down, but the gap there continues to decrease. We did talk about that and I wanted my people to see that that's something we can point to, that we are making progress in that gap. Although still, we have work to do across the board. Economically disadvantaged students, forty-nine point eight. So we do have significant, some substantial drops that we need to look at. Reading, there you see, we went down overall in those individual subgroups. Slight increase again with students with disabilities, three-tenths of a point. Did have a drop in math with students with disabilities, which is something that we're looking at there. But if you can, if you see there, I mean, you're looking at seven points, just over seven for our white subgroup for reading. Five points for economically disadvantaged from forty-eight to forty-three. Talked about that slight jump for students with disabilities. Math, quite a drop there, sixty-two point five to fifty. Little bit less for our white subgroup, three point, three and a half points or so. And then substantial drop for our economically disadvantaged students there and students with disabilities.
What's, do you know what your percentage of students with disabilities is?
Overall, it's about roughly between fifteen, sixteen percent, thereabout. I know the percentage-wise, I don't have the exact number on top of my head, but percentage-wise, it's around that figure.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Science, science is a relative strength. If you think about the district as a whole, our science is usually one of our, one of our most prolific areas. We did take a drop somewhat in science. Overall, it was at extremely high, highest in my time there at ninety point five. We did drop to eighty-three point seven. And I don't, I don't want to point to this as like a, by all means, I don't make excuses, but we do, another thing with a small school is, you're talking about one, one group. So basically, it's, I guess I could frame it basically as our entire grade level is one class, is one class. So you got to think about it. We try to keep that in perspective. The needs of one class can be very different from one of the other.
I don't mean it, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
But that's what I was wanting to ask you later and since you hit on it now.
Yeah.
Was there a particular grade level that you saw struggled more than others?
In science in particular?
Any, any subject?
Yes, definitely. And I'll speak to that.
Thank you, sir.
I'll definitely speak to that in just a bit. That's something, yeah, that we do, I'll, I'll talk about pockets of success in a little bit when we get into some of the grade level slides here. Yeah, yeah, no, no problem, no problem. There's our overall. We did not meet growth. We were very excited in twenty-two, twenty-three, so this is why this stings a little bit more to us. We were a B school and we still see ourselves as a B school and go for more than that. We are a C school at this point, kind of regressed back to kind of where we were in twenty-one, twenty-two. But we're a proud people, as we like to say. We have every intention of reaching back and surpassing that score in twenty-two, twenty-three there. So into our goals, June, by June of twenty-twenty-six, we'll increase our overall, that's, of course, all subjects by ten points, sixty-two point seven to seventy-two point seven, which would more or less put us back into B status for all intents and purposes. We'd like to move our reading from fifty-five point two to sixty-five point two, math from sixty-three point eight to seventy-three point eight, and science from eighty-one point four to ninety-one point four, which I think we can do even better even this year. And I will say too, I know this is a two-year plan, this reads, you know, it's always traditionally been a two-year plan. We're going to make every effort to try to reach that in a year's time, if at all possible. That's going to be the mindset. That's going to be our mindset for this year. And we've got, we've put, I know that's the same, you'll see a bunch of slides there, but we've put every grade level for reading and math, we've put both fifth and eighth for science as setting individual targets, individual learning targets. It's very hard to see on this screen, but you can probably see it in your documents. We had some grade levels, when I talk about pockets of success, they grew tremendously. If you look at our sixth grade last, this past year, as opposed to the year prior, they took a gigantic leap. So you can look at individual grade levels and you can see, well, we asked probably the same question that you guys are thinking. Wow, what did they do, you know? What did they do that was different than the others that we can sort of pivot and maybe corral in some ideas from those teachers who were able to build and see success? But since we're small, we see ourselves as a family. But since we're small, we see ourselves as a family. We, we, we own all the learning targets as a whole. They're all our kids. They're all our kids. And so that's why we keep, even the ones who, who saw relative success as opposed to other grade levels, they're still included a, as a target. And that's just continual again showing all of those. So what are our action steps? Really, I'll preface and, and I wrote notes here and I'm not going to, it's just to remind me, I'm not going to read from it, I promise. But the big thing we talk about is core instruction. It comes down to core for us. We have great, we have a lot of experienced teachers. We have a ton of experienced teachers. We've sprinkled in some new folks this year that we're very excited about, but the key for us is alignment and rigor and core instruction. That, that is the piece that we want to point to. Well, how do you know where your core instruction needs to go? It comes through assessment. You know, we talk a lot about testing. There is a lot of testing, right? The, the one, the have-tos, the ones that we know we have to do, the ones that our, that our state tells us to do, the ones that our district likes for us to do, to keep a monitor of student progress. But also one of the pieces that we needed to tighten up on is those formative assessments that individual teachers and grade levels do, the common assessments. And making sure that we're doing it more frequently so that we keep a better pulse of where exactly, so you know day to day where your students are, concept by concept. So we're creating quarterly formative assessment counters to ensure mastery of power standards, those key academic standards through the course of the school year. One of the programs that our district uses for the K three grade levels in particular, ninety-five percent core phonics. We're going to make sure that our K three teachers are utilizing that. We piloted it last year in third grade and second grade. Those teachers got a pretty good introduction to using it, but we're really going to bring ourselves together in those primary grades so that everybody is tying the phonics piece and marrying that to the comprehension piece. Third grade is probably the heaviest lift for that. You guys know that third grade is, it's a heavy year. It's the first year of EOGs for those students. It's the first time that you're shifting from a lot of primary reading skills into comprehension. But you still have a lot of students who are working on those foundational phonics skills. So they do both programs countywide. But ninety-five percent, again, it's aligned to the science of reading principles that we have. And to positively affect student performance and growth in the end of your reading assessments, we're going to ensure that those foundational phonics skills are, are, are as good as they possibly can be so that the, the plow has, has teed the field for comprehension. On the flip side, for grades three through five, we use magnetic reading. Again, in our third grade, she piloted that last year. We're implementing that from, for grades three through five. And so we're going to make sure that she gets the support she needs. Our third grade teacher, again, this is one reading teacher for all of third grade. But that, she spoke to us about being able to mesh the two things because that is a heavy lift. You've got those students with a heavy phonics and base reading skill need, but you got to move into the comprehension. And so we're going to help, help her particularly in third grade, making sure that she's able to balance the magnetic reading there. But for third through fifth as a whole, we're going to monitor that and make sure they're aligned and make sure it's on, on with the pacing. Eureka math, that was something that sort of introduced last year. We're really focusing on our middle grades there. And this is kind of where I'll note, we had our middle grades math teacher for seventh and eighth. She lived in Randolph County and an opportunity came for her to move, to be closer to home. And that was at mid-year. That's tough. That's really tough. So we weren't able to hire at that point. It was just due to the timing. It's difficult time to hire. It's hard to find someone. But we have a knockout middle school math teacher that we are happy to welcome this year and we are confident. She's very familiar with Eureka. She worked in curriculum last year. And she, she has a strong knowledge of that. So we're very confident that she's going to make a lot of headway in middle school math. But we're going to make sure that we're using, utilizing, utilizing that resource to the best of its ability. Our second goal, June, by June of twenty-six, High Falls will close the overall achievement gap comparative to overall population by ten points for our students with disabilities. It's been hovering right at that forty-five percentage point gap. We're going to cut that by ten to thirty-five point one. Our economically disadvantaged students from twelve point nine to two point nine. And we would like to get, again, this was the same as we, our goal was last year. We want to take that gap with our Hispanic subgroup and totally eliminate it. We want it gone. We want them spot on, on level with our majority subgroup, the white subgroup. But there, you see some of the data there that we're actually going to try to grow from. That just breaks that down further. One of the things we were able to do this year that we did a couple of years ago, we, we did repur, we were using Title I funds to have what we call an academic coach, which is basically what, what we use to pull small groups of students to provide that additional support in foundational skills. Previously, we had kind of used those, some, the majority of our Title I funds for a second grade teacher assistant. We weren't quite, quite there in our allotment this year, but we, again, our school improvement team decided they wanted to reinstate having that academic coach with really the key focus, she's going to work with those who are one to two years below grade level, but really the, the biggest thing is that we want to catch those kids who, they're right on the cusp. There, we had quite a number of kids who were just on the verge of being proficient. And diagnosing what, where did they fall short? What do we need to push? And, and allowing the academic coach to pull those students who were just shy of making it. And also those who, you know, we don't want to slide back with those who just squeaked by. So she's also going to work with those who were just marginally proficient in reading and in math. She's already working. She's been working for several weeks. And that's totally evolving, depending on student need. If she's tracking data herself, so it's not just our teaching staff, our official teaching staff tracking performance. Our academic coach keeps data as well on the programs that she uses. And she is tracking that. We look at that as a team. Our MTSS team monitors that and that, those groups change every, you know, by need, depending on if the kid really, you know, he no longer needs that support, we're going to move in somebody who may be over time and shown they need that support. This one is, is probably the biggest, the biggest ship in the dock that we're trying, that we're trying to do, to go with and evolve. We have worked a great deal with MTSS process since I've been at High Falls. It's been a focus all the time. But it's always felt like in a, and it, I think a lot of it goes with the fact that we have nine grade levels. You've got a lot of different mindsets because the elementary K two mindset is a lot different sometimes than the middle school mindset. So everybody's perception of what MTSS is may be a little different to come together on. So I'm also very fortunate this year, my assistant principal, Ms. Brooke Atkins, also has a background in curriculum and in MTSS. And she and I have worked closely and she's phenomenal. Has a very strong, she, she's helped kind of build a more structured MTSS process for us. We have representatives from every grade level, from every grade level. But again, it really marries into the data track. She is a data hound. She, she helps me learn things with data that I never knew. So we want to, rather than go by gut, we don't want to rely on gut with kids and just on, you know, based on kind of what you saw that day or just in, you know, brief interactions with students or one small group. She has really solidified the data piece and tracking that over a period of time so that when we come to our MTSS meetings and tables to talk about kids, you're looking at, you're looking at hard data. You're looking at hard data. Because again, if you don't have that, sometimes the conversations, when you have multiple grade levels, a big span, the views can be very different. When you have a foundation of data to point to, it helps center the conversation about individual kids. And that's not just academic data. That could also be behavioral data. You'd be surprised how many of our primary level grade students may have some suggestions for middle school behaviors that middle school teachers like, oh, yeah, that might work. So at any rate, again, that's, that is something that we're committed to. It's just that constant pulse tracking of data for the MTSS process for our students that are, that are in that. Well, that's, that's roughly it.
Thank you. Members of the board.
I have a question. Actually, I think it's, it's more for Donna. Donna, or even Mr. Dr. McCaffrey. How many schools aren't doing Eureka math? Is there any that are not?
So in the middle school, the only school not choosing to do Eureka math is West Pine Middle, and that was with Mr. Swafford being new. We wanted him to learn his school before we had a program on. So in six through eight, all of our middle schools except West Pine are utilizing Eureka math. In elementary, it is still a pilot. If you remember, we still have big ideas. So we have McDee's that's K five. Then we have VAS that's two, three. We have Robbins and Aberdeen and Sand Hills Farm Life that are doing three through five. So we're, we tried to spread it out. Fifth grade at Westmore because she wanted that transition from Westmore, from her fifth grade to her six, seven, eight. So we will really analyze the pilot. We are, we're really watching check-in data and, and information to ensure that we are meeting the needs of the kids with this program.
Yeah, because that, that was going to be my other question is, I think because Robbins, and you said Westmore and you guys are doing that, it'd be great to see what the high school, how it reflects onto the high school with math one and, you know, math, math two or math three. So that's just in my head, just looking, looking at the data that way. So that's why I was, I was wondering if you guys were the only ones up there and I couldn't remember. So. Nothing to do with you.
Oh, no, not a problem.
Other than that, I say you're, you're doing a great job. You're on the right track. High Falls is, like Shin was saying, it's a different school. You know, it's smaller population, more hometown feel, family oriented. I, I get a lot of parents up there that just love that school. They love everything about the mission that is, you know, for that school. So you're, I think you're on the right track and you keep doing what you're doing.
Who's next? Yeah, go, go ahead, Ms. Brooke.
Yeah. Matt, I, I think you're doing a super job. I think you're right on track and this is going to be no problem for you. I loved your, your vision when you said, as soon as we have a problem, we are right on it. So you're, you're right there. I love schools that go to eighth grade. I think that, that like Stacy said, the family aspect, the community, you really get to know these kids. You go to church with them, you see them in the store. It, it's family and I love your school for that. Do you have any discipline problems?
We, we're, we're not immune to it. I mean, you know, we, like I spoke to middle school, middle schoolers are middle schoolers wherever.
Oh, they are. Yes.
So you know, there's, and I always say this about our school, a lot of times it, it is, you are, you nailed it. We, we strive to, to keep the family feel. I mean, and, and we, we want to do that. But sometimes when you have kids who are together for nine years, they feel more like brothers and sisters sometimes. And even going back to when I taught at High Falls, I remember a few kids that I, that had a couple of squabbles that turned into something else, but it's almost like sometimes the problems we have is that they get too comfortable. They, they, they may say some off remark, they may do some horse playing type thing that's not intended to be hurtful or to be mean or whatnot. It's almost like they're like a brother and sister who, who, you know, are running around the house and big brother swats sister in the head with a notebook or something. You know what I mean? I mean, there's a, there's a bit of that. There's a bit of that. But no, overall, now, like, like other schools too, we're small, but we do have students with needs. I mean, we do have some students who have unique needs that, you know, that we work with, that are part of the MTSS process and it may solely be for behavior. And so we, we, like any school, you know, of any size, we, we try to see what the root of that is. There's always a root to a behavior. There's a reason for it. So we try to get to that. And we try to, to do what we can to support them. And, and again, you know, I, I love that our MTSS team is across that grade level span. And you get some ideas. There may be a reward system that a kindergarten teacher suggests that could translate over to the middle school level in some form, in, in, in some form, and we could apply it. And, and they have good insight. It's just a good insight. It's a good advantage to have to that.
Thank you. And I think you're doing a super job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you.
Ms. Anderson?
Hello, Mr. Moore.
Hello, sir.
I have a, I have a couple. So I have a question real quick. What percentage of your students are economically disadvantaged?
That percentage is prob, it's somewhere around, I want to say thirty, around thirty percent? Thirty-three? I knew it was around thirty, so about thirty-three percent.
Okay. Two things struck me. Sometimes when I look at these graphs, my mind starts wandering. I start fervently flipping back and forth. So the first one's an easy one and, you know, we spent thirty-five million dollars per school building two school, well, three schools, two of which, one is D rated and one is F rated. High Falls does not have a shiny new thirty-five million dollar school, yet you're a B rated school. So we, we all need nice facilities. We need, you know, suitable for education, but shiny new schools do not equal great academic performance is my first observation. My second observation, this is why I was flipping back and forth. I was struck by the, by the high achievement of your, of your economically disadvantaged students. And so I was flipping back and forth to do some comparison and this is kind of near and dear to my heart because I grew up in that category. And the, you know, I'm a firm believer that it's not economic. You know, this, you know, there's always these studies saying economic disadvantaged children don't do well. We'll go to Iowa where, you know, poverty exists, but the students do extraordinarily well, right? And so I, you know, I've always said that poverty often follows culture and lack of family structure and support, right? That's just, you know, not every case, but you know, there's reasons for poverty. And frequently, unfortunately, poverty is also accompanied by, again, a, a culture and it's, and it's accompanied by, well, as I said, lack of family support. So I did this little comparison and here's what I found. I looked at Cameron, Elise, High Falls and Carthage because those just happened to be in front of me. The gap between economic disadvantaged students and students in general is a twen, pretty much across the board. Well, Cameron has a twenty percent gap, High Falls has a twenty percent gap, Elise has a zero percent gap and Cameron has a twenty, a twenty-five percent gap. So basically there's a, well, first of all, all the achievement and economic disadvantaged in, in North County, so here, here's the result of my analysis. The economic achievement of economic disadvantaged students in what I would call North County is in the fifties and sixties and there's about a twenty percent gap. Well, if you go down to South County and you look at Southern Pines Elementary and you look at, and you look at, I'm sorry, ma'am misspoke, the, the achievement of the economic disadvantaged students are in the high forties or fifties. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong column. So the, 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 the achievement, the grade level performance, economic disadvantaged students in Cameron, Elise, High Falls and Carthage are in the high fifties, low fifties with about a twenty percent gap. When you look at Aberdeen Elementary, you look at Southern, well, let's look at Southern Pines Elementary, their achievement was thirty percent versus a fifty percent average in North County and there is a sixty percent gap. You look at Cranes Creek, which gets students from South County and there's a sixty percent gap between the two. I'm sorry, a forty percent gap. So what we're faced with is if you look at the Moore County School population of economic disadvantaged children in general in South County, there's a forty percent gap and the further you go north, the smaller the gap gets. And I would say that the economic disadvantage remains constant. I would say that there is a, those economic disadvantaged families have different cultures and different levels of family support and family structure, which, which leads to better academic achievement. What I'm trying to say is the sole determinant is not poverty. There are other factors that address it. Anyway, I just. is not poverty. There are other factors that address it. Anyway, I just, that's not necessarily a comment on your school. I just, you know, as you were talking, I was looking at the numbers, and that's what I came up with. But overall, very good job at High Falls. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
No, just one second.
I'm sorry.
Not quite. I've got to give the Colonel.
I'm sorry.
Got to give the Lieutenant Colonel over here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
How are you?
Hi, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Great to see you. Editorially, I'm a great proponent of the K through 8 model. I think the consistency and continuity that's possible, there is a great assets. Pauline already said on the discipline piece, if we could, if we sitting here today could grant you one wish, what would that be?
Oh, my goodness. Well, I know one thing, and my staff and I have talked about this multiple times, and I'm excited for Westmore in getting a pre-K. That's an exciting thing for them, and we, at some point in the future, I know there's a, I've kind of picked her brain about everything that that entails, and it's a lot. It's a lot. But long-term, I would love, I would love to have that at my place. I would, I would like to have a pre-K, and I know that there's a lot of lead-up to that. You know, there's facility things that have to be in place. But, you know, as a big thing, that would be probably the big-ticket thing that I could think about for the future. My community speaks about it. My families, my staff, I have staff with kids who would love to see that for their own, who are, you know, very little, or, so that's, at some point, I would like to look at that and see where that could lead.
What would you estimate the demand might be, numbers-wise, roughly?
You mean numbers of kids?
Kids, yeah.
It fluctuates. Like this year, I would, let's point to kindergarten, just as the closest example, I guess. So this year, we actually, I mean, we're right at the tippy-top of the class limit, but we have one kindergarten. From year to year, you may have, with us, you may have two kindergartens, you may have one. So that's a little bit, I won't say alarming, but like you, that's always something as a small school that you have to think about, is that, you know, you're trying to put your ear to the ground and say, how many three-year-olds are in our area right now? I mean, really, you're trying to, you're trying to project out because, I mean, it could be a matter of two or three kids making the difference in terms of having, you know, a preschool or having a kindergarten. So I guess it's kind of hard to quantify. Quite honestly, it's usually, like I said, just a handful of students, one way or the other, for us, that can make a big difference in terms of, you know, how many classes you have. So that's kind of, that can be kind of scary for us, you know? But, yeah, so I'm not sure if that helped, but it's really, it could be a very back-and-forth thing from year to year for us.
Well, we should look on getting that on the road to.
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely at the very, you know, conversational stage at this point. I've talked to Ms. Sinon a little bit, like we've talked a little bit, you know, about it, about it being somewhat of a dream for the future. But it's definitely a community, it's something our community has spoken of, and like I said, our staff who's part of our community, a lot of them have spoken of.
Great. I look forward to visiting you before long.
Yes, sir. Please do.
Thank you.
Come on down.
I'll be real quick.
I just want to add on to you. I think what that would do too, because I just got out of that, that meeting this morning for Shaq, and they were just talking about preschools, how we are in need in Moore County for them. That would bring a lot of kids up your way as well. So me, so if I had a child in Aberdeen that needed preschool, but High Falls was the only preschool that was available, I would bring my child up that way, and then maybe I would want to stay with High Falls because I enjoy your school so much. So that can bring even better opportunity for you guys. Just a thought.
I'll be real quick because I know you guys want to take a break. I noticed that your biggest problem is students with disabilities, okay, in terms of achievement gap. You say you got about 15%, but I noticed there is no statistics, there are no statistics on the science of students with disabilities.
Right.
Why is that? Are they not taking science?
Well, it's just because there's two grade levels, 5th and 8th, and because we're so small, if you take the total numbers of those grade levels, we may not have enough to quantify what the state recognizes as the minimum to be a subgroup.
So could it be that the gap in and of itself is because you have so few students that it might fluctuate just depending on the students?
It can. It can. It can somewhat, but I mean, you know, again, when you look at, we knew we had to do something because it was, it was pretty pervasive across all of our testing, that we took that little dip. But no, I mean, it can, like I said, a handful of students in many things in our school, our size, can have an impact.
But let me say, I know that you're, you had kind of a tough year, but it looks like to me that you're going to make progress and get that growth back, and.
We, they're chomping at the bit.
We, I believe this board has faith in you, and so, and I know that you'll do well by these students.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Dr. Locklear, thank you. Are we going to take a break?
We can take a brief break. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think you guys need, probably need a break for about five minutes at the very least. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your work and leadership.
Calling us back into session, Dr. Lachler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now we're welcoming Ms. Kennedy, proud principal of Westmore Elementary School. Dr. Metcalf?
Stealing my thunder. Jana Kennedy from Westmore Elementary. And how long you been there, Jana?
This is my second full year, so about two and a half. I came in November of 2022.
You're doing a fantastic job, Jana Kennedy.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for choosing to meet with me today. I am the principal of Westmore Elementary, proud principal, as Dr. Lachler and Dr. Metcalf said. And we're gonna talk about the great successes that Westmore's had over the last two years. Very proud of our students and our staff. We're gonna start with our vision. The Westmore Elementary, Westmore Elementary is committed to actively engaging all students in the learning process within a nurturing, safe environment. We value our students and our community. We are committed to excellence in learning that enhances student achievement. Our community is a vital part of Westmore. Those of you that have visited and been with Westmore, to Westmore, all of you have, you know that that pretty much is the community. We have a restaurant and a Dollar General, and other than that, we're, we're pretty small up there in the front, in the north. But the community is very vital in our success. We have our Fall Festival and our Heritage Day that we celebrate our community members and our students every year. So we're very proud of those community events. Our mission at Westmore, the Westmore family will provide a safe, positive environment that results in academic growth and character development for every student. We care about their academics most certainly, and we also care about who they're gonna become. And so that's part of all of our things that we do at Westmore. Moving into our core beliefs, working to develop students that demonstrate, and these are our PBIS expectations, the acronym for PROUD, perseverance, respect, ownership, unity, and dependability. These five words center our whole school. So we use this in our house system, that is K through eight, and in our school motto. Every, every morning, you're gonna hear me say, "We are Westmore and we are Panther Proud." And all the students know what this means. We review these throughout the year. We have these expectations through PBIS with our students. We're gonna meet the needs of all of our students, establishing partnerships with students, parents, and community members, and supporting students' development and achievements in a safe and positive learning environment. Moving on to our demographics, when this data was pulled on the fourth of October, we had 271 students. We now have 280 students, and I am so happy about that. We've had a few homeschool parents that have brought their children into our schools since the beginning of October. And we've also had a few come back from a charter school, so we're happy about both of those things. Two seventy-one, and now we have 280 as of the 21st of October. And so about, about seventy-seven percent of our students are white. And then we have about 25 students total, or about eight, ten, eight to nine percent that are either black or multiracial. And then we have about fifteen percent that are Hispanic. Overall, our students that are economically disadvantaged is about fifty-nine percent. Fifty-eight point nine is the right number. So about 136 in our three eight grades that are tested. Looking at our overall GLP, we have done some moving. We're very proud of our students and our staff over the last few years. They have really done some work. We saw a nine-point growth from the 22 to the 23, 24 school year. Overall, our black students overall increased three percentage points. We did see a small dip in our Hispanic students. That goes with some of our subgroups and some of our tested areas. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But we do have a focus for those students this year. Our white students went up 10 points overall the last two school years. And then our students that are economically disadvantaged went up nine points. Now remember, you know, those students fall into other subgroups as well. So if one subgroup does well, our economically disadvantaged students are gonna do well as well.
Before you proceed, this is exactly, I forgot to include Westmore in my previous analysis, but this highlights that. Look, there's a roughly 12% gap between the overall and black students, and there's about a 10% gap between the overall and the economic disadvantaged. And my point is, we need to start looking for other, look, so this shows it can be done, and we need to start looking for other reasons other than skin color and economic status for poor academic performance. That was, that was, that was a follow-on to a point that I made in the previous presentation, so thank you.
Moving right along, by content area, our reading students have increased overall by nine points. We are very proud of that. We're focused on some of our Hispanic students. We took a dip there, but we are focused on that. We do have a number, considering our size, we do have a larger number of EL students in the tested grades, so we're focusing on that. We have a wonderful ESL teacher that comes in and works with, with our students weekly. And so we're focused on helping them in those areas. And then, you know, positive gains across the board for reading. Our math, we went up six points overall as well, and we are very proud of the math work that our students have done. We do have, we did pilot Eureka last year, Eureka Squared, I'm sorry, last year, in fifth grade and in eighth grade. And we have chosen to continue doing Eureka Squared, grades five through eight. Kindergarten through fourth grade, we'll still be utilizing big ideas this year, but we have plans to move forward with Eureka Squared in the future. Our science, remember, this is only for fifth and eighth grade, so we do have times where we have no students in certain subgroups, just based on their enrollment in each grade. But overall, we have increased 15 points for science, and so that is to contribute to the CNI team. They really came in and worked with my teachers and helped them make sure that we were focused on things that really honed in on some vocabulary and other things, and some hands-on experiments with science. And we're having a planning day today, actually, talking with the CNI team, focusing on what we can do to make sure with these new science standards and new tests that we don't take a dip, or we can moderate the dip that we do take, if there is one. As you can see, overall, we have come out of a D status that was in 21, 22, to a C status for 23, 24, and we are three points from being a B. My people are very, very, very excited and ready and hungry to be a B. We have, you know, shown significant growth over the last two and a half years, or two, actually, three years, three school years. And that is contributing to our students and to our staff that's honing in on the standards and really thinking about how we can push our students forward. Moving on to our goals, goal one, by June of 2026, I would like to remind the board that we finished our two-year goals last year, so now we're starting a new set of two-year goals, so these are for 2026. So we wanna increase, continue to increase overall GLP by 10 percentage points in then in each area that we're tested. So math, reading, and science, we wanna move them on up by 10 points by the end of 2026. And because we do have so many tested grades, at Westmore, we do have lots of performance indicators that you can see there on those next three pages. Some of the ways that we're gonna do this and create that 10% gain over the next two years with our staff and with our students, we're gonna utilize some virtual data walls. And so we use data walls and PLTs. This is where we store all of our data. We conditionally format that data so that we can color code and see who's on what shade of blue or this shade of yellow, or whatever shade they might be. And we compare them against their like age peers, and then across the district and across the state when we have the data that's available to us. We also monitor students in PLTs through the MTSS process. And so we do kid talks once a month. We did a kid talk yesterday where each teacher or team comes together and talks about students that they may feel are struggling or areas that they might wanna focus on. We look for small goals that we can have big wins with in this type of setting, and we progress, monitor students as needed. We're gonna be specifically, we specifically chose a tutor that is a retired Moore County teacher who's a National Board Certified Reading Specialist, and she comes twice a week to tutor our students in reading. And we are on the hunt for a retired math teacher, which they're hard to come by. If anyone knows one, call me. So we're on the hunt for a math teacher as well to help come in and tutor us, to help tutor our students. And we utilize our Title I funds in that. Groups will change with the tutor as we receive data, so we're always reflecting back on our data and seeing who needs to go in, who might need to come out, or how often. Some of our friends go both days to see Ms. Kavanaugh, and then some friends only go once a day, or once a week. She comes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our second goal that we're gonna be utilizing and working and focusing on is our overall growth. We wanna exceed overall growth from a 1.06 to a 2.1 by the end of 2026. And so we're just honing in, digging deeper into those standards, focusing on our students and their data, and seeing how we can cultivate that future push for them and how we can really dig deep into what is gonna help them push us over to the edge for that growth. And some of those things that we do is, like I said earlier, the CNI team, Donna and Dr. Burse and all of their friends that work with them, come onto our campus quarterly. We have quarterly planning days, and that is for K-2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. And so they try to schedule them all in the same week because, you know, it's easier to get everybody in one spot. It can't always happen like that, but they are on campus right now with my K-2 team, talking about core phonics, which is something that we're doing this year in K-3. And then Eureka math, Eureka Squared math is there as well. Ms. Brandy already is there, working with my math teachers as well, getting them ready for what's coming with Eureka 'cause K-2 is gonna be, we're gonna go to Eureka eventually, but also looking at the standards and the North Carolina standards to support them in that area. We also do grade level specific PLTs, like I said, with our virtual data wall. And we're gonna be utilizing the growth monitoring tool on iReady between the beginning of year and the middle of year diagnostic testing that we do and the middle of year, end of year diagnostics. So we have three diagnostics we take every year that's mandated. And so we'll be doing some monitoring tools, using that monitoring tool in between those just to help keep our students on track and help our students, teachers know where a child may be leaning. Students on the MTSS watch list, which is what we call for our PLT meetings, will complete monthly. Some of them will complete monthly growth monitoring times, and these are small little snapshots. They're not very long, and it only focuses on what this child struggled with on their last diagnostics to see if they've improved since that diagnostics. So we found that to be very, very helpful last year with just our MTSS. So this year, we're gonna do that schoolwide, and our first one is at the beginning of November for the whole school. And all grades will be doing that, kindergarten through eighth grade. Our third goal that we're working towards for 2026 is to close the overall achievement gap with our students with disabilities, you know, by 10 points from 50.9 to 40.9. Some of our action steps that we're doing to support that is we are doing monitoring, effectively looking at our inclusion and pull-out models. We have two wonderful EC teachers that have to wear two hats. Normally in EC, you know, you're either a resource teacher, you know, or you're an inclusion teacher. Not the case at Westmore. You have to be both. And so they have to wear many hats, and they do a great job. Ms. Harrison, Ms. Baptista have a full schedule, and so they might be pulling a kindergarten group, and then five minutes later, they're pushing into an eighth grade English class. And that's how they're, they have to switch their mind very quickly. So we're monitoring, we're having weekly PLTs with the EC team this year to just kinda make sure we're watching all of our children and making sure we're not missing anybody in the gaps. And the EC department has been very helpful in making sure that we need any support, that they can provide that to us. We're also gonna be doing instructional walkthroughs, not only admin instructional walkthroughs, but grade level PLT walkthroughs, where we can go into another grade level, see what they're doing in their classroom, and see if we can take some of that back to a different grade level and utilize it to support our students. Our first grade level PLT walkthrough is scheduled for November as well, and we're gonna be looking for core instruction, differentiation, the use of small groups, engagement with the students and of the students. So you can be engaged with a student, but they might not be engaged with you. So we're gonna be looking at both of those. We're looking for both of those things. And then just overall best practices for teaching and learning. Thank you.
Members of the board. Oh yeah, Ms. Bruno, go.
Okay. Oh, I think you, you are amazing.
Thank you so much.
You are just so amazing. I, I can't say anything except that I, I just think that you're terrific, and whatever you're doing, keep doing it, 'cause it's working, and you just have such leadership skills.
Thank you.
It's amazing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I look forward to you guys getting those three extra points, and then we're gonna...
We're looking for six. We're looking for six.
So let's say, let me say this then, let me revise it. I look forward to you getting well into B-school territory.
Thank you, sir.
And when you do that, we're gonna have to fire up the smoker or something and go up and have a, have a letter grade advancement party for you guys.
We're excited about it. My staff is very pumped up about it.
Yeah, it gives you something to focus about. You know, there's a lot of criticism about school letter grades, and, you know, they're not perfect, right? But, you know, they're an objectives statewide measurement. And, you know, it gives people something to focus on and, you know, a goal. So anyway, yeah, I look forward to you guys advancing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I was too slow, sorry. Hi, Ms. Kennedy.
Good morning.
How often do your students get a, under the microscope in your PLC, PLT process?
So we meet in PLTs every week, and each week is designated for a different thing. So once a month, we look at our MTSS, so that's where we're looking at all of our data for every child. And we say, you know, Ken, he's on our watch list, so let's hone in on him. Where, and then sometimes in that same meeting, we might say, oh, Shannon needs to come onto our watch list, and we'll put Shannon onto the watch list. And then we take children off the watch list, too, so it's a revolving list. And then it's once a month that we hone in specifically, but every PLT, we give opportunity. Hey, is anything happening that we need to know about right now? We don't make them wait until, it happens to be the third week of the month. So we don't make them wait until that week, but if there's something that needs to happen right now, tell me, and then we'll monitor, and then we'll really talk about it when we have MTSS week.
Super.
Yeah.
How do you promote parental involvement?
Well, we have a wonderful PTO, and they have really been self-starters, which is great. When I came to Westmore, the PTO was there, but it wasn't there. It had just a couple people. And so we have found that when we offer in-person PTO meetings, we also offer a virtual meeting because people are at ball games, you know, we got cheer practice, we're trying to cook something for dinner so everybody could eat before nine o'clock, and so we offer a virtual meeting as well. So parents that want to be involved can put their headphones in, listen to the conversation. If they wanna chat, they can chat, and then, you know, our PTO will follow up with those parents. I don't really follow up with those parents unless they specifically have a question for me, but the PTO president and the vice president will follow up with those parents and say, hey, I saw in the chat, you said you might wanna help make cotton candy. Great. Here's, here's how you can do that, and here's the time I need. And so, you know, or I saw in the chat that you said you'd bring some potato salad. Wonderful, you know, whatever. So they, the PTO really does a great job about following back up with those parents that comment during the virtual meetings.
Great, super. Thank you. One last one. How's your bus running?
How's mine, sorry?
How's your bus running?
The bus is great. We have one bus at Westmore, and it's great. We do have a high school bus that parks on our campus just for location, you know, because the driver lives close to there. And so for our afternoon route, because we got those new kids that needed to go home, so some of our students that live on the north end of 705, or I should say the south end of 705, headed towards Northmore in the afternoon, she takes those. It's about nine children. She drops them off, and the rest of the route runs its entire, up to, up to the top of Seagrove and the top of the line, and then down Dover and around. So we were able to, Jason Nelson helped me very quickly. When I called him, I said, "I got new children." He said, "I got a solution." And so he very quickly helped me make sure that those kids could get home. That same day, they enrolled, actually. They got to go home on the bus.
Great, that's good to hear.
Yeah, it was great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
And Mr. Hensley has to leave, so thank you, and he's got just a whole business. But I do, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Students with disabilities. How do you classify those students with disabilities? In other words, they have to have an IEP of 504, or what, what, what is it?
Yes, sir. They have to have, you know, go through testing and have, if they're gonna have an IEP, they have to go through the process of testing, and they have, you know, documentation and, you know, all the things that come with that to have an IEP. And then students that have a 504, they may have a diagnosis of something like ADHD or, you know, something of that nature, but doesn't technically greatly impact their academics, but maybe they just need to have preferated seating, or maybe they need to have a little extra time. So we have 504s and IEPs.
Do they have to be in that category to be a student with disability? Or are there others?
Yes. No, it's either, they either have a 504 or an IEP.
Okay, alright.
Is that right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
Alright.
You got, you got me thinking about it now, yes.
And, and Dr. Lachler, let me, let me say, the one thing that this principal does and all your other principals I see that's unique, they are just so enthusiastic about our kids and about our schools, that's the reason why we're, we're now number 10 in the state. And so I, I thank you for your leadership over in your school. And Dr. Lachler, I thank you for your, 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 your work and the work of your team.
Thank you, sir. Just one quick point of clarification, 504s are not in that percentage, but, but IEPs are. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Only students who have an IEP would be included in the testing category for students with disabilities.
So, so that would, that would vary, especially in a small school. Am I right?
It would vary in a small school, and it would also make sense why there is a, why there is a gap there because obviously their disability is infecting, impacting their academic performance. So you'd expect some gap.
One year, you, one year you might have a child with a very severe need for an IEP and some like on a borderline IEP, so I guess maybe, what I'm trying to figure out is maybe we shouldn't be so concerned about that particular gap in a small school.
Clearly, the students you have impacts. It's why you get some waves with grade level proficiency in a smaller school, 'cause they're impacted by the smaller numbers, particularly when you're breaking it down by subgroup. That's why our schools look so strongly at growth, because that's student against student. It's not a grade level proficiency.
And this school had great growth, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your other, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, go ahead.
Now, I just wanna let Ms. Kennedy know that the homeschool children, I directed them your way, and I encouraged their mama that they would be well taken care of up there. So I'm, I'm happy to see you so excited to have them.
And they, they are thriving.
Good.
They're doing great. That's actually our word this year. Every year, Westmore chooses a word, and our word this year is thriving. Their oldest child came in and it was part of the Blend Ed program to begin with and has now chosen to come out of Blend Ed and be full-time. And when the mother called to say, "I'd like to enroll the rest of my children," she said, "My son is thriving." And I said, "Oh, that's our word." So, so we're very excited to have them.
Thank you.
Real quick, you know, I had known that, that Westmore had students coming back from charter schools and other alternatives. And this goes back to what we as a board have, have said all along, is we embrace competition. You know, we embrace the competition from, from the charter schools, the private schools, and the homeschoolers because competition makes everyone better, and the competition's gonna exist whether we embrace it or not. The key is, is we have to make Moore County schools the best choice. That's how you win in competition, is you become the best choice. And that's what's happening in Westmore.
We're very proud. Very proud of our students.
Students and families are flocking back. A flock of nine, but it's still a flock.
It's a big flock for us. Yes, sir.
Thank you again. Board members, yes, I could get fired up and talk about the Moore County schools being the best choice. But one thing I will say, thank you for your comments, Mr. Levy. We've got a great team, but leadership matters. And we're proud of the leaders we have in our schools and proud of you, Ms. Kennedy, and the work of your school. So thank you very much. Great job.
Yeah, thank you so much. So nice to have you here.
Speaking of leadership, we now have Mr. Cassidy coming forward, principal of Cameron Elementary School. Welcome, Jared.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike?
Jared Cassidy.
Look, I got chastised yesterday of jumping to the principal, and so now I'm making sure I give Mike his opportunity.
If I could just get you to be, well, I won't say be quiet.
That's not happening, Mike.
I know. I've been trying.
Privilege of the superintendent.
I've been trying for nine years to get you to be quiet.
Privilege of the superintendent, yeah. Thank you, Jared. Good morning.
Jared Cassidy from Cameron Elementary.
Thank you. Board, it's good to be here. I'm the proud and excited principal of Cameron Elementary. And I can't wait to share about the progress we made this past year on top of building on two years ago, my first full year there. So Cameron, our mission and vision, our vision is provide all students with equal access to a challenging curriculum, getting that rigor in there, meeting them at their level, and growing each student. Not just with educational experiences, but building the relationships and giving the experiences outside of school so you, they can tie them into when we discuss them in class, where it might be a trip to a museum so we can make those connections for our students. Our mission is to be committed to our staffs, families, and community, enabling us to meet the needs of all students while providing them an education that allows them to realize their highest learning potential. At Cameron, our motto this year is "Learning is not a spectator sport. Get into the game." So we're telling kids, hey, I want, I wanna see engagement, I wanna see asking questions, answering questions, and collaborating. So we're getting more student buy-in this time. Hey, I got a job to do, just like staff does, just like I, I do. So the culture is just thriving there, using Ms. Kennedy's word, at Cameron, this whole complete buy-in. And you get to see the excitement when you go into the room and you see that engagement and them diving into the work. 'Cause I told them, it's not gonna be easy, but you can do it, and we could provide the supports for you to be successful in the classroom. So that goes along with our mission also. And of course, we believe all students can learn, and that the achievement should be the focus of the entire school community. And as I'll touch in that as I go further with our goals and how that ties in at Cameron this year. Our demographics, we are 66% Caucasian, 6% African-American, and 23% Hispanic, and 5% multiracial. We're sitting around 215 students. We are a small school, so every student, just as a large school, every student matters, and we can focus on individual student at Cameron. Now, our successes from last year, we grew another 4% in proficiency. Over the last two years, we grew 19.8% in proficiency. And we're still looking to get better, still improving. Last year, I came in and said, hey, we're refining our processes that we defined my first full year there. Well, this year, we're still refining, 'cause we always wanna get better. We always wanna improve the PLT, we always wanna improve the MTSS, and improve the core instruction, just get better in our craft and to support our students. In our reading, we went up also, reading went up around 9%, and even our math went about 4%. So again, constantly moving forward, and that's what we tell everybody at Cameron. Even small, small success is a success, and we're moving in the right direction. Now, our science did take a little dip. Again, we, our PLTs, we started looking at the data from... what the data from last year, see what we can do, what we can tweak, how do we impro- uh, improve this. But at the end of the day, it is a cohort size also, uh, such as a small school. So, um, our students, as we look at that, um, that does have a, play a factor also. Our growth, this is something that I'm very proud of, just, uh, as our proficiency, we're growing students also. When I started, we were a negative three point eight, um, EVOs growth scale and today we sit at one point oh seven. Uh, we are three points away from being exceeding growth here at Cameron. And that just speaks volumes to my staff of dw- dwelling down to the individual student. Uh, last year, we did not meet growth, we were around sixty-nine percent, um, of growth. This year, we close to exceeding, so we, our processes are working. Again, we just want to refine and get those better to better support our students. My staff, I cannot say enough about them, they're working hard, they're diving into the processes, diving into the curriculum. Uh, we do have Eureka, Core Phonics, all that, and they're just working with our CNI and just getting, going headfirst into it and how we can, uh, better support our students. And I'm thrilled about our EVOs growth and cannot wait till we grow kids more and more each year. Our goals, our two-year goals, uh, by June twenty twenty-six, we want to raise our overall, uh, proficiency to fifty-eight points eight to sixty-eight point eight. Um, after we got our scores last year, I shared them with my staff and they were like, "Okay, well, what can we do next? What are we going to do next?" They still have that hunger to get better, to, to, uh, teach our children, to grow our children, to provide those supports that they need and those experiences to help them move forward as they go from our younger grades to older grades, but not just our Cameron Elementary, but to Crane's Creek and West Pine to better prepare them, uh, for that transition to middle school with that. So our ELA, uh, we're looking to jump from fifty-seven point one to sixty-seven point one, uh, math sixty point two to seventy point two and our science from fifty-nine to sixty-nine point five. Again, I, I truly believe, uh, Cameron is very capable of this, so if we reach this, we are around six points away from being a B school and I tru- truly believe that with our staff's hard work and our students' engagement, we can make that happen, uh, in the near The second slide is going over the third, third grade data, um, and our mark, benchmarks for it and previous was my fourth and fifth. How we're going to accomplish this goal, uh, in the next two years is to continue with our data dives with CNI, curriculum and instructions being coming into our PLTs and breaking down the data and getting the extra set of eyes, the extra support, "Hey, what are we going to do with this child?" And we can truly look at each individual child when we have this. In our PLT room, we have charts up, we have, uh, children's name written on it, color-coded circle and that just signifies, uh, where they're at at the point, what levels, uh, where we want them to be. So we can actually look at standards, "Okay, this student hit, missed this standard, but they got this right, what can we do to provide those interventions?" So it's all a collective collaboration between the schools, CNI, central office supports that we have. And it's going back to look at the data. When we look at the data, we break it down, we sit there and see where the child might be struggling, but we also celebrate successes also of the children and of the staff with that. So it just gives us a magnifying glass microscope look at each individual child and what supports can we put in place to help them be more successful than they already are. A collaboration with the curriculum specialists, we already have, uh, Ms. Alred and, uh, Ms. Burris coming in and working with our math and our ELA teachers, uh, getting with the new curriculum, um, for our K-two, but also just reinforcing our Core Phonics with our three through five and Eureka. So just in there with some professional development with planning and, uh, what we can do with that. So it's a good collaboration effort, um, with our staff and CNI. Our goal too is to, of course, to exceed growth, which right now we're sitting at a one point oh seven EVOs score, now we want to get a two point oh. Uh, when you look at our school report card, we were sitting at eighty-two point six percent. Uh, so if we're, if we hit that eighty-five, we're exceeded growth, so we're right there at it and I truly believe that's what we're going to achieve, uh, this year with it, with the hard work of my staff, um, diving in and supporting the kids. What we're going to do, we're going to monitor, we can have a kid talk in our PLT once a month. I know Ms. Kennedy touched on it and each school might have a different name because I know it's happened at every school. But this is where we bring in the kids, "Hey, so such is struggling in this area, what can we do? What is, so it's, so you don't have to worry about that tunnel vision." And with my school, I have a lot of singletons and the educational term is they might teach fifth grade ELA and fifth grade social studies. I don't have another teacher to collaborate with that, but with our PLT process, we combine some, um, grade levels so they can have different sets of eyes and just don't feel like you're alone and you don't get that tunnel vision, but you go, "Hey, I'm struggling with this, what can, what have you done in the past?" Or, "Hey, I'm, this has been successful, you thought about that." So it's all about the collaboration and what we can do to support each child with their successes and difficulties. We're establishing the common form assessments. Again, this is difficult to look at when you're the only one teaching that grade, that subject. So I'm going to reach out and try to collaborate with another school this year is one of my goals and maybe we can have a common form assessment between the two schools so we can use that open line of communication and see what we can do and see what's working and what's not. Uh, and I want to enhance parental involvement. Uh, we have already scheduled, um, curriculum nights this year and the first one was informational, where I talked about my Title One and they come in and each teacher gave a little presentation, "Hey, this is what we're going to do this year, this is the topics we're covering." Because as you all know, when I went back to elementary school, I sat down and was looking at lessons, I didn't learn like this. I didn't, it was totally new ways and I know my parents are wanting the help, but just like me, I'm like, "How can I help?" Because the way, the process that they use or the ways even to find out a long division is different. Uh, so what we come up with is our each parent night is going to be hitting on a certain topic. So when we have math coming up, and I can't remember the exact night, I went and bought a whole bunch of deck of cards because, uh, we taught, my teachers taught, it's like, "Well, you can play these games with this, um, such as lay down two cards, what's the addition, what's subtracts." So we have a long list of games that they, parents can play with their children, so they, like, they want to help. So here's a way you can support your child at home, is to reinforce multiplication or simple math. And that's what we're trying to build upon that is to give the parent supports at home because I know they want to help, but it's just giving them the knowledge and the ability of how they can. So I think that's really what we're going to dwell on this year because when I was talking to my staff, I had a teacher say, "Y- you ever heard of the triangle of success?" And I said, "No, I hadn't heard that term." She went, "You got students, you got staff and you got parent." Well, I never heard it put that way, uh, because I know you, it's a, it takes a village to raise a child, I, I go with that one. But I, and I got to thank her about it, I said, "Exactly right." So that's where I want to give parents, um, more opportunities to be involved and, uh, more resources, resources at home if a child needs some help. So I'm very excited about that this year. So, and that's some of the good things that are happening at Cameron Elementary this year.
Okay, members of the board. Uh, Mr., okay, oh, you, you're going first. Okay, yeah, go. Go for it, Mr. Benway.
Um, Jared, you got tremendous momentum coming into this new school year.
Yes, sir.
Um, obviously you peaked last year with your, your efforts.
Mm-hmm.
You achieved your goals and now you're into the new school year.
Mm-hmm.
How do you consolidate and institutionalize the gains from last year to launch into this year?
As far as setting the expectations, as, as we know that we made our gains, the kids are building confidence in their self, they know, we celebrate the progress they made, the success they made. So it's building that confidence and but setting that expectation a step higher. Uh, like our motto this year is, "Learning is not a spectator sport" because we, it's like, what's a spectator? When you go to a ballgame, when you go to a dance competition, a music, you're just sitting there watching. That's not the case. You're engaged, you have your expectations, I have my expectations and we talk, we go to the point of everybody has a job to do when they come to school. I have my job, staff has their job, students have their job. So we're reinforcing that and building that into the culture of Cameron and the students are responding incredibly. Um, so we're looking at how to celebrate that because with our theme this year, each grade develop, uh, adopted a sport and that's, we took our staff pictures and stuff like that. I had a referee jersey, uh, so we're, yeah, that was mine this year. It was. So we're looking, um, about how to, uh, to celebrate the successes. When I go in and see a child really working hard and doing this, trying to see what we can do for our celebrations and work on individual celebrations with that. So it's just institutionalizing the culture of it and the expectations, "Hey, we were here, now we're here, hey, we can do that much better" because they see the success. They're buying in and it's just helping that much more as we go throughout the year.
Great. You still driving that bus?
I hadn't had to this year. Actually, we, we were pretty good on, um, bus drivers, so I hadn't had to pull the bus license out of the pocket yet this year.
Okay, okay, great. You know, I, I feel like I've just been through one of the best after-action reviews you could run across at the National Training Center. Great job.
Uh, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Yeah, who's next? Uh, go ahead.
So, I don't think you're giving yourself enough credit, but, um, so I'm going to give it to you. Um, excuse me, so, um, when you came on board, it, basically you, your score was a forty-three, which is close to enough, I mean, let's just be honest there, right? Um, and you went up fourteen points that year to go to a C, which is incredible in itself, fourteen points is huge, um, growth. And then, um, and then last year you did seven, so you're just building up, building up.
Yes, ma'am.
I see you going to be next year, if not maybe even higher than that. So, great job on whatever you're doing, continue.
Thank you.
And you're nothing but positive things, especially from the teachers, so you're doing a great job.
Uh, my job is to support them.
Yeah.
They're in there and we're all in the trenches together.
Yeah, and they know it, so, great job, thank you.
Ms. Burdo?
Jared, terrific job. I, I loved hearing everything. Um, I, I, I really liked that you, you, you supplied things for, for, at home for, for the, for playing cards or playing whatever they're playing at home. Um, because you know, when you know your addition facts, when you know your multiplication facts and you can do it just like that, s- everything becomes so much easier. So that is really terrific that you did that. And learning is not a spectator sport. I mean, you get that into their kids, the kids' heads and they'll do really well. Um, I always used to tell my kids when they were growing up, "Look, at, school is your job. That is your job. I have my job, your father has his job, but this is your job." And I, I think that goes, that goes far, so, uh, uh, congratulations, you have done an awesome job.
I appreciate that.
Keep it up.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
There, there's little else to add except for you have made the perfect recipe for success and it, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be good.
Yes, it is.
One of the, one, one of the things that, that, you know, I'd sit back here and I learn, but, 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 when, when you guys come here and, and you ladies come here and you tell us about your schools, I learn. And what I think I'm learning here is that, Dr. Locklear, you allow each one of our schools to be individual and to, uh, to, to, you, you, you don't demand uniformity. Uh, and our culture, each school has a different culture and it seems to work for that population within that culture. And that may be just one of the secrets of the Moore County way, um, because, uh, it seems like the school is, uh, just doing real well. It seems like our other schools are doing very, very well. Um, and, um, uh, it, it, it looks like that's because, that's because they're free to innovate. You know, you do the, with these games with the kids, that's, that's a great idea, fantastic idea. Uh, and, and, and it's different from what other schools are doing, but you're free to innovate and I think it's fantastic, so I, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy, and we have great, great staff members, great leaders, um, whether you're talking about our central services support, you know, something that hit me as Jared was talking and almost every principal's noted, whether it be Kate Fall and her team, whether it be Donna and Rachel and her team, going into our schools and serving our schools. Uh, because we, we call ourselves central services for a reason. So whether it's those team members, whether it's great leaders like Jared, uh, we try to find great leaders and we try to let them go and let them do the work and support them in doing that work and I'm very proud of them. Thank you, Mr. Levy, appreciate it. Jared, great job, buddy, keep it up.
Thank you, I should appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.
Let's talk about Carthage Elementary School.
Let's do, let's do that. This is, uh, Brian Wills, who, uh, is the new principal at Carthage Elementary School. He had the, uh, an enviable task of following an icon, uh, but right out of the gate, right out of the gate, he has, uh, made the school his own and is doing a terrific job, so, Brian Wills.
Is that a velvet jacket?
Corduroy.
Nice.
Ms. Caldwell, please keep your hands off, uh, Mr. Wills' arms.
Stay warm, try and stay warm.
I like it, nice.
It'll be eighty this afternoon, so. Thank you.
I'm gonna make no comments, I'm just gonna let it.
Thank you for having me today. We'll start with our, uh, vision, mission and core beliefs. Um, our vision at Carthage Elementary is that we provide every student with a variety of educational experiences, uh, while building those relationships with the community, thank you. Uh, to ensure each child reaches their full potential. The mission of Carthage Elementary is also that we are working together to create an engaging, supportive environment to ensure that all children are learning, growing and succeeding. And our, uh, core beliefs overall is that we're meeting the needs of our students, ensuring that all of them will learn and succeed, uh, providing a safe and clean environment that fosters learning. We're also believing in ensuring the academic and social emotional well-being of each student and also goes along with building those relationships. And then we believe in the ideas of Bark, which are, is our tenants of our PBIS program, which is to be responsible, have an awesome attitude, being respectful and being kind. Some of our key demographics, um, right here, we're pretty much almost, almost at a seventy-thirty split, as you see, with sixty-eight percent of our students, um, white and our Hispanic, multiracial, black students sitting around ten percent, eleven percent overall and our one percent, um, Asian population. Our overall school, uh, GLP, as you can see from twenty-three, twenty-four, overall, we did dip down from twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, to fifty-five point nine percent. Uh, if you look at some of the subgroups, we did have, um, small dips overall with black, Hispanic by one percent, just a little under. Um, our white students, they go down six percent, EDS, two percent. Uh, our students with disabilities did rise though with a sixteen point five to twenty-seven point eight, um, overall. Look at reading overall, again, breaking down that three-five data, uh, from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, it is fifty point eight percent, uh, down from fifty-six point one for reading. Math, uh, did go from a sixty-four to a fifty-three point six percent. And then break down the subgroups as well, you can see the data trends, um, between our black students, white students, economically disadvantaged, um, just knowing that we do have growth to make with those students and, uh, we're committed in doing that this school year. Uh, science is a, uh, nice bright spot, highlight from last school year. Um, we did grow twenty point eight percent overall, uh, from fifty-five to seventy-five point eight. And I attribute that from my understanding coming in, um, very intentional vocabulary instruction to make the scores go up by our, um, one science teacher, Ms. Brown. Look at our school growth and school performance grade, uh, we are meeting, uh, growth at point nine nine, again, the school year, or sorry, last school year, um, still making growth and overall our performance grade is a sixty-one, which is a C. And then moving into the goals for, uh, this school year, overall, um, sorry, for the next two years, uh, by June twenty twenty-six, uh, Carthage Elementary School moved from point eight, for, um, increasing math from a fifty-three point six to a sixty-three point six, and then science as well, even though we did make that twenty point eight percent, uh, gain, we still want to get into that eighty-five point eight percent range over the next two years. Some of our action steps for this goal is, uh, looking at our, um, core instruction overall, and our tiered instructions, so using our interventionists and our instructional support facilitator on campus, meeting with PLTs, uh, four times a year to discuss, uh, progress in tier-three intervention. They are doing much more than that, they are a part of our, um, PLTs on a weekly basis, and we have an instructional facilitator who is top-notch, uh, she is there multiple times a week and supporting us, um, overall, and supporting our teachers in the classroom, doing observations, doing walkthroughs, meeting additionally without just our PLTs, um, and in those classrooms, supporting where they can. Um, using our Title I funds as well, we're providing an interventionist, and, uh, we're gonna be providing a math tutor to implement our tier-three interventions for our students in K through five, uh, for reading and math. That interventionist is working with around forty to forty-five students already this school year, pulling small groups every single day, all day long, uh, for our tier-three. Math, um, we have set up for starting, um, in six to seven short weeks, playtime Christmas rolls around, uh, to have that individual, um, in the building, um, and working with our, uh, math students. Also, looking at getting, now that I'm abreast to what's going on at Carthage and catching up with everything, um, getting an additional, uh, tutor or two, using some local funds that we have, um, in-house, and then, um, also working with our EC department to see if we can get, um, an intervention tutor as well from, uh, from them to support with our math, and our reading with those interventions. Um, using our M-class data, students who are red and yellow in reading, they're receiving the individual reading plan, and ensuring that that is, uh, going home, and that we're following that IRP, is what we call it, um, so we can make sure that the parents are also involved, and they're understanding where their, um, highlights are, and also where they need that support in reading. And then our K-five students are all completing a core phonics survey, and then data from that survey is helping us create and guide small group instruction using, uh, U-Fly intervention strategies, and also, uh, rewards, which, um, I learned, actually, my first week in July, I got an email from Donna saying, "How are you gonna use this?" And I had a research, I said, "Well, what is this?" So, um, but we're utilizing that, um, not just for our tier-three students, but also our tier-two students, um, across the board. Goal two, really looking at the achievement gap, and breaking down the data I just shared a few minutes ago, um, looking overall at our students with disabilities compared, sorry, or yeah, students with disabilities compared to the overall population, uh, by ten percentage points, so, um, closing that gap from twenty-eight point one to eighteen point one over the next two years. Our EDS students as well, from ten point six to zero, and our black students as well, from, uh, fourteen point eight to four point eight. Our action steps with this is really just focusing on, uh, myself before I go into this, is really just taking a, a good look, you know, being brand-new, you know, I'm, I'm analyzing, I'm, I'm observing, and I told my staff that very first time I met them, August nineteenth. I said, "I, I need to build a culture here, I need to learn your teaching styles, I need to learn who you are as individuals." And then on top of that, in seven days, three hundred and fifty students are gonna walk through the door, and I gotta learn those families, and I gotta learn new names, and I gotta learn each individual student, um, which has been a blessing, and, you know, it's hard work, and I thought I'd get everyone's name by the end of the nine weeks, and no, not this time. No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying my best, but, um, overall, and when I say observing, I'm just looking at best practices, looking at core. Um, we just see some dips in scores from last year to this year, um, decrease, uh, with that reading and math, so I, I just wanted to analyze, what are we doing in core? And then where can I support from there, instead of just coming in saying, "Well, these are the scores, but I need to learn, y'all. Um, I need to figure out where's our strengths, where's my eye wonders, where can I improve, where can I help improve with our people on campus?" So, um, with that comes our reports from our data sources, iReady, M-Class, looking at pre and post-assessments for our standards, um, also our check-ins are coming up, actually, next week, so, using, utilizing all our data pieces as well, um, and analyzing with teachers, bringing in our CNI department for data dives, um, support with interventions, and really just seeing where's the strengths or areas of need for our students, and how can I support that? And, um, teachers also being provided that tier-support group based on, uh, data as well. So, with that, the MTSS process, you've heard it from a bunch of my colleagues today, um, first looking at those processes and procedures, everyone understanding what the MTSS process is and their role in it. Um, we do have an MTSS test team that meets monthly after school, um, they're the problem-solving team, but we're under this umbrella, everyone is doing the MTSS process, and just getting them to understand, uh, core instructions first. We might have an interventionist and tutors, and, uh, structural support facilitator on campus, helping us with tier-three interventions, but at the end of the day, they still have to come back, and teachers are required to do the tier-two supports overall, so we're hitting all of it, um, across the board. So, we're doing a good job with that, uh, commend my teachers for understanding that process, and we're, we're still figuring out all the, all the wigglies and everything in between, um, and how that looks, and where, where we're headed next. And with that, um, a lot of it's like a needs and wants assessment, which I'm doing next, you know, where are we with, um, our highlights, what do we need some clarifications on, just so we're all on the same page, uh, moving forward with that. Um, grade-level PLTs, we do meet, uh, weekly, and we focus on consistent grading practices, utilizing assessment data, and reading and math. Um, I did implement a quarterly PLT document, which they are using, um, each week, and that is breaking down our standards, breaking down our data, putting in their common assessment, post-test, um, data, just so when we come to that table as well, I know where the data's at. Where, where can we support, where do we see, um, the improvement that could be made? And then we're utilizing that data, we just had that conversation yesterday, you know, quarter one's done Friday, so, I mean, flies by. Um, we're gonna house that data, and when it's time to start spiraling back and looking at that data again, it's already gonna be there from the beginning of your standards. Um, our K-three teachers are completing M-class progress monitoring with ninety percent fidelity, as indicated by the DIBELS fidelity report. Uh, progress monitoring is key to making sure that we're staying abreast to what they are, um, producing overall, um, whether it's fluency, reading comprehension, um, and that's for M-class, um, overall, um, making sure that we are every five to ten days monitoring our students who are in red and yellow. Our greens and blues, we are still doing, uh, once or twice a quarter, uh, just to make sure that they are still where they're supposed to be. Um, we're seeing tremendous gains already, you know, a lot of those assessments are done within the first ten to fifteen days of school, and the growth within nine weeks, it's just amazing already what you do see. Um, using our Title I funds, I am providing, uh, three planning days, or sorry, half-planning days, to each, um, all teachers across campus, uh, one for vertical planning, we're gonna get to that point soon, um, but overall, just looking at differentiated activities, uh, working together to have that extra planning time to see what is next. Included with that is our EC department this year, and our interventionists, just to ensure that they are working together in our PLTs and the grade levels, um, 'cause sometimes, you know, they, they have their own position, their own job, but they have to collaborate to make sure, um, we're meeting the needs of all the students. Um, then our standpoint, I have a, um, new school, I also have a new AP, could I join me, Lisa Nixon, she's phenomenal, she's here with, uh, Weston Elementary, and we're performing walkthroughs, um, and I will, I'll tell you, the first nine weeks has been honestly just observation and informal walkthroughs, like I mentioned earlier, it's just me getting to learn the staff. Um, I'm excited for Friday to come, 'cause nine weeks is up. I told my staff, nine full weeks is what I'm doing. When it comes to starting next Monday, we're gonna be a little more intentional about what those walkthroughs are with more specific data, uh, really focusing on, um, lesson-plan components, looking at some learning-focused strategies. We're gonna start just with some of our basics with classroom environment and some wait-time, those are very simple, uh, learning-focused strategies that we'll, um, coach our teachers on, uh, while some staff professional development with that, and then provide meaningful feedback overall. Um, and again, just with lesson-plan components, I'm just looking again at core, what are our warm-up activities looking like, what's our academic vocabulary activities looking like? Um, whole and small group instruction, are we sticking to, you know, the minutes or that plan? Common assessments, e- even your exit ticket, just being intentional, looking at our ICAN statements. And, um, overall, just making sure, you know, we had a walkthrough probably about three, four weeks ago already, uh, with Donna and team, and, you know, just getting that feedback as a new principal, you know, it was enlightening to see, you know, the highlights and the eye wonders, and some of that, that I didn't include, 'cause this was made a few weeks before that, um, walkthrough, it's just also assessing text, assessing rigor, making sure that we are reaching, uh, the students, and, um, making sure that they're getting exactly what they need, so it's matching up to their assessment. So, those are the goal-two action steps. Oh, oh, sorry. And goal three, this is more of a leadership goal that I added, uh, for myself as a new principal, um, but looking at the teacher working distance survey, picked one, uh, question from there, and overall, my school is a good place to work and learn on the teacher working distance survey, we wanna keep that at ninety percent or higher over the next two years. Uh, breaking that down, um, looking at some of the performance indicators, um, I picked five that I just noticed that do need that bump, and overall, um, just creating a culture of trust in the building, one, I'm brand-new, they don't, they don't know me. I told them the other day, I said, "I think we've known each other sixty-three days." Um, it seems like longer, which is even better, um, but sixty-two days in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not that long, um, it's very, very short. Helping teachers improve instruction, so if we go back to those two goals that we just discussed, we're, and we're in those PLTs, I'm in classrooms on a daily basis, um, walking in one, two, three times a day, depending on my schedule, um, just making my presence known, that I'm here to support. Knowing what's going on in my classroom goes with that, I wanna know what's going on, I wanna stay up to date with, you know, classroom teaching. Um, I've been out of the classroom since four years now, um, so it's still fresh, but at the same time, I don't wanna lose that edge, you know, I wanna join in and support where I can. Teachers are allowed to focus on educating students without minimal interruptions, just working with my office staff, working just overall with the school, where can we minimize those interruptions and take care of that extra noise or stuff later on? I want, I want kids in seats, I want, uh, students learning, and focusing on, focusing on that. And, sorry, my eyes are getting a little funny, sorry, this atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in the school as well, and that's just including everyone being transparent, um, as a new leader, um, raising that bar, whether it's talking with my school improvement team, our PLTs overall, um, and it's as small as even looking at, um, our school budget, um, just looking at those little things from teacher work condition survey. Again, following behind, uh, Ms. Warren, like Mike said, a legend, um, in, in the district, so, um, a lot there that I'm going off of, and trusting a, a new staff, and some new staff, a lot of them have been there, Carthage is a, uh, a great place to be, a lot of our teachers are veterans, we do have some new staff, uh, that have come on board or transferred from other schools, or even, uh, from the district level down, uh, this year, so it's been, been a great support. Um, and those action steps, again, just with that, I'll be doing a dipstick survey, um, next month, it's already here, um, coming up, uh, just to analyze and kind of determine the needs across campus, and, uh, where I can improve already with three months in, and, um, we're, we feel like we're building a culture of trust, mutual respect, and...
Members of the board.
Have a few comments?
Please.
Um, so, just a question again for Ms. Gephardt, sorry. Um, the DIBELS fidelity, or even you, but, DIBELS fidelity report, are we still doing DIBELS, or is that something different?
No, that is the M-class assessment, it is the DIBELS eight measures.
Okay.
So, we just call it DIBELS eight, that, so he's just, instead of saying M-class, it's the DIBELS eight measure.
Okay.
So, it's the same, same assessment.
Same assessment, okay.
And they're just, he's talking about the progress monitoring with fidelity report to make sure that we are doing what we need to do for kids.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clear that in my head. Um, also, I, I'm a huge fan of the vertical planning, so I love that you're doing that. Um, and, and I've always, you know, being a teacher and having a few principals in my day, um, I, I believe the best practice of what you're doing right now is observing and seeing what your culture is at that school before you even change anything is huge. Um, it doesn't step on teachers' toes, so to speak. So, I think you're doing a great job on that, and you have an amazing staff. I mean, we were, Dr. Locklear and Shannon and myself were there not too long ago, and, um, they, they were just wonderful. So, you're in great hands as well.
Absolutely, yeah, very, very proud of them.
Yeah, so, uh, keep doing what you're doing, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Who's next?
Yeah?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Hi, Mr. Wollum.
I'll just go around.
I look forward to visiting you before the end of the year.
Absolutely.
Prove up and say hi.
I look forward to having you.
Good. Um, where did you come from?
Originally?
Well, his mother.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I had to say that.
After the earth cooled.
I've been, I've been down in North Carolina for twelve years now. I started in Ho County Schools, um, Ashley hired me as a teacher, two thousand and eighteen, stayed there for three school years, and then Jenny Wiley hired me as an AP at Westvine Middle, and I just transferred from there to Carthage, um, in July.
Yeah, right, great. How would you assess your school's security situation?
School's security, um, my staff will tell you that I am the most anal about safety, I mean, over the top sometimes, um, overall, just to, to make sure, I mean, when you have that responsibility of three hundred and fifty students plus sixty-five staff a day, um, overall, safety is my number-one priority. Um, overall, we are an open campus, I've been dealing with that overall, coming from a building, um, that, that's just a secure building, it's like, I called the T at Westvine, that's all it was. Um, but overall, I, I do think we are safe on campus, um, our SRO does make appearances, um, our classrooms, they, they all know, lock their door, I mean, all, all those processes are in place, uh, we have updated our emergency bags, just different processes this year, um, just to make sure that we are following exactly what Student Support Services wants, and also the state, um, overall, but, but I, I would say the campus is safe. Uh, Carthage PD, Moore County Sheriff's are right down the road, they are there, like, I mean, lickety-split, um, and they're always supportive, they walk our campus, um, just to make a presence known, um, on a weekly basis, and they're doing our traffic every day.
Great.
Without, uh, question.
Super. Have you had a lockdown, uh, exercise?
We have, we did one last month.
Okay, good, wonderful. How's your, how are your buses running?
They're running great. We have two buses, or, we have two buses in the morning, an EC bus as well, and then we have a third bus that actually just got added from transportation to alleviate some of the ridership for another bus to get on time to Union Pine High School. Um, so, we have a new sentry driver doing a quick route with ten kids now in the afternoon, um, but all students are on time in school, they're actually there, um, by seven oh-five when we actually open the door, which is fantastic.
Super, great. Polly and I rode, uh, a couple of your routes last year, so it was a real adventure.
Right.
Well, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Polly?
Yeah, um, uh, I, I think you're doing an amazing job. What I loved is that you didn't just charge in, you came in and you observed, and I, I think that's really, really important to your teachers, and, um, you're at a great place, and you're gonna make it greater.
Thank you.
So, happy.
Ms. Davis?
Not much more to add, just an appreciation that you understand where, where you're, where you're coming from and what you're stepping into, and, and the appreciation for your staff, and, uh, how you're handling it to, to begin with. I'm curious to see where you're gonna go with it.
I'm excited.
Oh, I know, yeah, I can, yeah, I'm ready for Monday for you.
Absolutely, yeah. I am as well.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing I wanna congratulate you on, and nobody's said all that much about it, I suppose, is that in science, uh, you had a twenty-five percent increase from fifty-five percent to about seventy-five percent.
Yes, sir.
Overall, uh, that's, uh, that's an amazing number, but I'm seeing a trend, am, am I wrong, Ms. Gephardt, uh, that in science, we're doing really, really well in all of our, in all of our schools?
Yeah, last year, our science really, that the teachers, it had been a curriculum that they had been implementing for several years with revision, small revisions in curriculum documents, so our science was really strong last year. Um, as all, several of the principals have alluded to, we are keeping a very close eye on our check-ins, as, uh, Brian mentioned, they start next week in elementary school, because the new science standards have increased a rigor, so we're really trying to do a lot of professional development around the new science standards, so that we don't take what they call the dip, that a lot of folks that, at, in the state typically take when we re-norm a test. So, I am hoping that we can continue this high, or right around the, my goal is for us to stay right around seventy to eighty as a district, but science has been, we, we really have it dialed in, so we've gotta make sure we dial it in very quickly for this new assessment.
Well, lesser, also lesser achievement gaps in science, and I'm hoping that, I don't know, maybe there's a lesson to be learned for the, for the English of what we're doing right on science, I don't know.
Science is a huge, huge piece of a vocabulary assessment, and remember, you guys have been with me several years now, where I say, "We're focusing vocabulary, we're focusing vocabulary." So, what happens is, since science is such a heavy vocabulary assessment, with the increased vocabulary that we focus on, you see that increase, so we're getting, definitely getting bang for our buck.
Well, it's doing something right, so, that's very good. That's all I have, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Brian, thank you.
I appreciate it.
We're excited for your work with, uh, the Bulldogs this year, and excited for where it's gonna go. Appreciate your leadership, bud.
Thank you, appreciate y'all.
Ms. Sacconi, welcome.
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we need to do an introduction to Ms. Sacconi.
Stop. Hi, everybody.
Hi. We, we all know and love Ashley Sacconi, principal of Pinehurst Elementary School, second year in a row as an A-school, can't describe how difficult that is to do at once, to maintain that, and not only maintain, but continue to grow and expand. She shows that data, they didn't stay where they were at. They actually made tremendous improvements. That's incredibly difficult, challenging thing to do. I honor her and her staff, we all do. Ms. Sacconi?
Thank you. All right, let's jump in. We have not made any major adjustments to our vision, mission, and core belief since the last time I was in front of you all. The one thing I would say to you about our team is that we truly are relentless. We live our mission every single day and we call each other out on it. So, it is absolutely part of the culture of Pinehurst Elementary School. And, and truly, it means something to us. It, it is heartfelt and it helps make decisions when decisions are hard. So, we do continue to work on that vision to make sure that everything we do is intentional. Everything is done on purpose. And that's why we're seeing success, is every single decision is on purpose. And it's exhausting, but it's what's, it's why it's working, is that we are just very intentional. I will tell you, we did add a couple of years ago to the belief statements, near the bottom, educators are committed to the implementation of evidence-based practices. That has been a real commitment by our team that we implement just as well as we de-implement. So, when we know something is not highly effective, we stop. We don't do that anymore. We're not gonna waste our time doing that. We're gonna do what we know the science tells us works. And so, you know, again, I think that's part of the reason that we're seeing some of the growth that we're seeing. Our demographics actually experienced a little bit of a shift last year, which was lovely. We haven't been totally diverse in my years there, always sitting between 80 and 83% white. Last year, we saw a little dip. And honestly, we embrace that. That is a blessing for our team and we're happy to have it. Our free and reduced lunch population continues to go up every year. And, and all of that, I think, also speaks to the results that we're getting. So, we're getting the best results we've ever gotten with the most diverse group of kids we've had. And so, that's really important. So, it's, it's not as diverse as some places, but it's more diverse than we've been. So, we'll, we'll take it. In terms of grade level proficiency, I mean, I, I don't even, honestly, I don't really know what to say. We're, we're just working it. We're just working it, y'all.
Wow.
You know, I can't, I, I don't have an extreme explanation for it, but I do know that at Pinehurst, it's every kid, every kid. It's not subgroup, it is individual. Because within a subgroup, anything can hide and we don't have time for that. So, we've got to absolutely make sure that whatever you need is what you need and whatever you need is what you need and that we're hitting every one of those little skill gaps to make sure that we're in growing children. And so, it's that level of intentionality and intensity that's, that's getting those results. So, very excited about that and honestly, really proud to see it over time. Because we can get really lost in last years, but to see it, it's really working. By content, same thing. I'm really excited about the growth with students with disabilities. For us, you know, at Pinehurst, we really value exiting students from that category. And so, we spend the last week of the school year exiting students who are proficient. So, that number always should be a low number. If students are, are a student with a disability, they shouldn't be highly proficient or we should be moving them out of that category. So, we were really excited. We moved several kids the last week of school last year before they went to middle school. And that was tremendous for us and it's tremendous for them and their families. So, our goal is always to get kids out of that category and we've been very successful in the last two years with that.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
That's the first time I've heard, I've ever heard that mentioned. And that's, yeah, we need to dive more deeply into that for sure. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, because that's different than when we heard from another source. It, it doesn't matter, I mean, different, different people for different schools, but that's just very interesting. Please go ahead.
Science scores, great. We, we're anxious about that new test too, but determined that that number's still gonna go up. So, we'll see how that goes. Norming a test always reduces, always results in a drop in scores and I've been doing this long enough to know that, but I refuse to accept it. So, we're gonna plunge ahead and hope we can increase that, that amount. But that was solid last year too. School growth, obviously, we're very proud. And, you know, the thing about growth is you never know what you're gonna get. It's a different comparison every single year. And so, getting that information every year is kind of a shock to the soul, good or bad. But we're very pleased with what we're seeing. And obviously, Pinehurst has a history of being high-performing, but it's more important to me that we have high growth. Performance is important. Achievement is great, but you don't get to, you don't get to count on the kids that walk in the door proficient. You know, we always say, those kids walk, you know, we have kids who walked in ready to go and then we have kids who did not. And the reality is you're responsible for all of them. So, everybody's gotta grow. And so, exceeding growth is actually really critical and to me is the most important measure that we have. We just want to make sure we're knocking it out of the park every single year. And still shocked at that 88 on that A. We were just praying to make the 85, so that was just a real blessing. Our goals, we like to write a one-year goal, so you see two years up here. But our true focus right now is on that goal number one. We know that it's lofty. I will tell you that I did not write it. That is totally written by a school improvement team who is determined to meet the 90, 90, 90 school research. That's what it's based in. And so, it's a reach and we know it's a reach, but we're quite confident we can get really close if not match it. And so, it's important to us that we hit the 90s. We think we can and we want to. And, and I don't think that we'll ever be satisfied till it's 100, to be frank. So, our action steps, we've got a slew of them, but these are our most specific ones. One of the things that we know in terms of basing so much decision-making on the science of reading, we watch our students over the reading domains. We see now that at Pinehurst, the kids are 96% accurate readers. That's huge. But they're not quite as fluent as we'd like for them to be. And so, that's really the next step for us. So, we're spending a lot of time looking specifically at how do we teach fluency intentionally every day with every student? So, that's in tier one and we're actually working that right now. We're looking at text structure for nonfiction texts and then, and teaching children to generate questions. We know that when students can create high-level questions, they can answer high-level questions. And so, it's a little bit of a spin. All of this is from the back end of Letters and so, really volume two. And so, we're really spending some time on that, really grades one and up, because fluency really becomes an issue about mid-year first grade. The writing scape and sequence is something we're really proud of. We've spent a lot of time delving into the Writing Revolution, which is a writing handbook. We're really excited. We've got some high schools on with us this year, they're using it too. But it really talks about how to craft writing. So, rather than saying, "Well, we're just gonna write this descriptive paragraph" or "We're gonna write an informational text," instead, what we're going to do is we're really gonna work on craft. And how do we put together a sentence? And then how do we expand upon that sentence so that we develop solid writers well before they get to middle school? We began this last year. We are just continuing to do that and growing that process. Really proud. We had, I actually had an intern with me yesterday who was, I'm spending the day and I was showing him some of the writing in first grade and he was like, "Oh, my gosh." I'm like, "It's so exciting." They're just gonna be really, really ready for middle school when they spend some time with us. But the bigger part for me is that we develop thinkers by having them write. And so, we want them to extend their thinking. I don't want them just to be able to take a test. I need them to be highly successful in lots of ways. And so, the writing has been a real focus for us. Last year, we worked in grades three through five on developing math fluency routines. Math fluency is something that you hear, I don't care how the students are, people still complain in high school about children don't know their facts and children don't know this, you know, and everybody blames everybody. So, last year, we spent some time really looking with math teachers at how do we teach fluency versus how do we assess fluency? We practice a lot of fluency, but how do we teach it? And so, when we really, really brainstormed all the things that we do, we found that out of about 27 items, only two actually taught kids math fluency. And so, we said, "Okay, there's our problem. That's our problem." So, we created a, a plan instead and we started this in March. And we saw tremendous results in a very short period of time. And to the point that we had a middle school teacher reach out to us two weeks ago and say, "What did you do?" Because all of your kids know their facts. And so, that was a celebration for us. We've extended that into second grade this year as well. And so, again, grassroots-driven, which is how I like to do things. I think it's so important to honor the teacher voice because they know, they're right there. But it did really kind of take the point of saying, "We're spending a lot of time on, on games and we're spending a lot of time on drills, but, but are we actually teaching them how to be a fluent mathematician?" And that's, that's a tweak. I mean, it's, it's, that's really something different. So, that's been, been very, very strong for us so far. So, we'll get, get a little better with that this year. And then, our last goal, or our last action step for this goal, is really looking at behavior and social emotional learning. It's a very small portion at Pinehurst Elementary of students who need that level of support, but we know that we are extremely explicit with interventions in the academic side and we want to be just as good on the behavior, social, emotional side. So, we've just taken our academic processes and really applied them to our behavioral processes this year, just to make sure that teachers are supported and students are supported so that eventually they won't need that level of support. There it is.
Members of the board, your accolades.
I got something too. So, as you know, Pinehurst is where I began my career as a teacher, so it, it always has a special little place in my heart and I'll be available in November, so.
Fuck, fuck.
No, I just, but I love that you said, "Honor the teacher voice." That's huge. And so, I really respect that. And, and you're right with, you know, with that writing component that you have, fluency is gonna work well with that. Because if you can write well, your fluency is gonna be even better.
Yep.
So, anyhow, it's wonderful. You're always doing an amazing job. You know, I hear it all the time. So, you just keep it up and I just, I really love that, "Honor the teacher voice." That's, I love that, so, thank you.
Yes.
Matt?
Please.
Hi, Ms. Sacconi.
Hi.
What kind of a handoff program do you have to the middle schools, if any? And the second part of that question is, do you, do you get to follow up on your kids and see how they're doing in middle school?
I'm always checking on everybody, particularly the ones that, you know, have my heart, right? The ones we're cheering on, though, you know. I really would like to have a K-12 school if I could really have it my way. Actually, I think my team would buy into that too. We'd like to keep them. In terms of a handoff, you know, my school splits between two schools now. One of the best things I'd love to see is a continuity of Eureka. I'm sending strong mathematicians to sixth grade and, and really, we've done, we've used Eureka off and on at Pinehurst for years and I know it works. And so, I, that level of continuity for math instruction is going to be tremendous. You know, I'm hopeful that we'll see more of some letters type rollout at the middle school level, again, because my kids are coming with strong skills, but everybody can get better. And so, you know, I think that's a, definitely a partnership to continue to work on.
Great. When I visited Ms. Sacconi's school, she introduced me to a notion of learning architecture. She was in the, in the enviable position to be able to put her own personal touches on the design of that school. And the one thing that really impressed me were these little learning nooks that you've established on, on, on each floor. I think that's a sort of genius. And I think she ought to be part of our, our advisory group when we build a innovative school early.
That's a great idea.
Great.
Well, we'll add that to Ms. Sacconi's list of activities.
Things to do.
Noted, noted.
You're, you're welcome, ma'am. Thanks very much.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Britton?
Oh, I think you're just amazing. I, I just really do. Yeah, I have a couple of things here. Relentless, you call each other out and you're intentional. I mean, that, and it shows. When we visited your school, it was intentional. And everybody's on the same page. It's so amazing, strongly on the same page. Honor the teacher's voice, like what Stacy said, so important. You're leading, but they have the freedom to do what they want. But they all knew, they all just know. It, 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 what a feeling you get. I also love that everything isn't a subgroup, everything is individual. I really don't like subgroups. I think that that's, and I think that's very, one of the reasons why you're so successful is that it's all individual. Do you still have the mother-daughter team?
Of course.
You do still have them?
We're great, yes.
Okay, that's working out really well.
Oh, it's beautiful. In fact, you wouldn't know they were mother-daughter if you didn't know. I mean, they are so incredibly respectful and professional. And they don't always agree either, which is great. I love it.
What was, oh, the math fluency that you're teaching. This really hits me here because I, I'm not good at math. If you show me something, I can do it right then and there. But two days later, three days later, it's gone because I don't understand why I did it. So, it never really makes sense to me. So, that you're teaching that is, is powerful stuff. It really is. And I can really relate to that. So, thank you. Everything you're doing, thank you. We can't wait to come back.
Come on.
I know.
Every day's a new day.
I know.
Always say, "I don't know what you're gonna see." I say that to Tim and Mike when they go, "I don't know what we're gonna see, but I mean, it'll be fun."
Thank you, Ashley.
Ms. Davis?
Could you elaborate more on how you move your, what, what steps are taken to move the students from, with the disabilities out of that category? Is that too much to go into today? I'm so fascinated.
I can give you a little overview, maybe. I, I think that what has to happen, and it's not just with special education, right? It, it has to happen with those students from an intervention standpoint too, that what we're doing with them has to align to what's being done in the gen ed classroom. And, and it took me, honestly, failure to figure out that that's what it was, right? Like, we were sending students and they were getting this, this information of some sort in, in Core. And then we were sending them to either intervention or special education services and they were hearing something slightly different. And so, you're asking a seven-year-old to make sense of that, right? And so, instead of providing clarity, because clarity breeds confidence, that's one of my mantras, we were confusing children. And so, what we've gotten really good at is making sure that whatever we're doing in Core is what's happening in intervention and is what's happening in that special education classroom. And so, suddenly, the gaps are becoming lower and lower because the kids are getting it, they're hearing the same message over and over and over again. And that, a lot of times, children, children just need more of something.
Sure.
You know, the increase in duration or, or intensity.
Repetition.
Yeah. So, that alignment has been tremendous. And I would say that that's been tremendous in general of the growth we see across subgroups. It's not just our EC population, but they certainly benefit from that too.
When did you start that practice?
Uh, three years ago.
Okay.
And, and some of that has been the science of reading, ensuring that we then had an intervention that matched it. You know, it's been this layered effect that now we have lots of that stuff in multiple of our schools. So, you know, I think we'll start to see that.
Across the board, okay.
The other thing I would say is that my EC department is one of the most well-organized professional learning teams you'll find. And they literally set the bar for the moon. And so, when you walk in that classroom, it's as intense as a gen ed classroom. We're not moving slowly, absolutely not. We've got things to learn. We've got things to do today. So, I think that's part of it too. Like, it's just no holds barred. So I think that's part of it, too. Like, it's just no holds barred. You've got to be successful. The grown-up world doesn't care if you have an IEP.
No, it does not.
You know, we've got to make you successful. So.
That's great. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
My observation of Pinehurst Elementary is personal because my granddaughter attends Pinehurst Elementary. And my one big observation is that she wants to go to school. And that, you know, I get all the numbers and stuff like that. But when I see her actually wanting to go to school, and I know this is, not only do I see it in the numbers, but I also see it's a great school. And you're talking about the 90s. I see you have a 93% science score, something like that. That is, these numbers are just amazing. So, we all here on this Board of Education congratulate you.
Thank you.
I have one other thing to say. Ashley, you set the bar high for everybody in your school. And I've said this a million times, when you set the bar high, people live up to it.
For sure.
And that's what you're doing. And that, I think you're phenomenal. Thank you.
I would also add to that. I think you also put in where people know exactly what to expect from you. So when they know what to expect from you, they know where they need to be. And so I think that's huge, especially a teacher-principal relationship, too.
Go ahead. Yes, Dr. Lockler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members. And we're extremely grateful for Ms. Chacon's leadership. She does have high expectations for her staff and team and school and kids, but probably no higher than she has of herself. And what I would also note is that even though we have high expectations, she's putting in steps and resources to support staff and support students to reach those high expectations. Appreciate your leadership, Ms. Chacon. We're incredibly proud of Pinehurst Elementary and the continued growth that you're leading there. So thank you. Appreciate you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Chacon.
I saw her this morning. So today, we've done an underground spirit day.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask.
And the kids are like.
You don't want another five-minute break, will we, okay? I mean, I'm fine with it because I just took a little break myself. You guys want to push through? Okay. Do you need a five, do you need five minutes? Or are we okay? All right, I guess we're okay. If that's okay with you, Dr. Lockler.
Well, I'll take care of my restroom leave when I need to.
No, no, if you need to, we'll take a five-minute break. Dr. Lockler.
I was really asking for myself, but I didn't want to, you know, call myself out on that.
No, 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 Dr. Lockler. Dr. Lockler, we'll stand and recess.
Sorry, Dr. Pratt.
We'll stand and recess. We'll stand and recess. Okay. Calling us back into session, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Pratt, again, welcome. Good morning. Your last presentation today, but as the saying goes, certainly not the least. Proud of the work going on at Southern Pines Elementary and appreciate your leadership. We look forward to hearing from you. So we'll turn it right over to you, Dr. Pratt.
Okay. Here we go. So proud of the work that we've done so far at Southern Pines Elementary School. We've had several successes this school year, and then we also have some opportunities for growth. And we will highlight that today, but definitely proud of the students, the staff, and the support from our parents. That support is increasing and we're proud of that. And so we're just gonna have continuous improvement in Southern Pines Elementary School. So our mission and vision are the same as last year. That our vision is to inspire lifelong learning for our students where the focus is on the whole child. We want to continue to focus on the whole child because we know that just focusing on one area is not going to be enough. We want to support them in becoming successful American citizens, leaders in their school and in their community. Our mission, together we create a learning environment that promotes the academic growth of all children by working in collaboration with students, families, and teachers. We will work on building relationships, that's going to be huge for our students at Southern Pines, building relationships, and increasing that academic rigor. That's going to be huge as well. We came out of low performance status last year, and that's one thing that DPI notated is the rigor at our school. So we want to continue to focus on that. At Southern Pines, we believe in integrity. We value that. We value high expectations for all students. A student-centered environment that is focused on our learners and meeting them where they are. We are valuing communication. Effective communication is going to be huge for Southern Pines Elementary School and then empowering our teachers to be the best that they can be. Here are our demographics. Our demographics have changed slightly within the last three years. Our white population has decreased slightly, and our black population has increased over the last three years. Our Hispanic and our multiracial, racial population has stayed about the same for these last three years, but there has definitely been some shifts in our population within the last three years. Our overall GLP, our grade level performance, we're holding about the same, about the same that we were last year at that fifty-one percent proficient. Our black students have increased, although it's not the, the increase that we're looking for, but it's still in fact an increase, going from that twenty to twenty-six. So we are proud of that increase. Our Hispanic students, they've declined slightly. Our white students are holding steady. Our EDS have increased as well as our students with disabilities. They also increased in their grade level performance. Looking at our school grade level performance by content and reading, this is our area of growth, where we're going to still be focusing on our literacy achievement. Our literacy for all students declined slightly, going from that forty-nine to forty-eight. Our black students declined slightly. There was a, a decline across the board, except for our white students and our students with disabilities. But other subgroups did experience a decrease in reading. For our math, this is one of our successes and highlights. In math, we had some huge gains in math. Overall, going from forty-nine to fifty-three percent proficient. Our black students had some gains in math as well, an eight-point percentage point gain, as well as our Hispanic students, our white students, EDS, and our students with disabilities. So in math, that was one a huge success, and we want to continue to continue with that focus and growth. But so proud of our students in math. In science, you see that there is a decline in science, but just knowing that this is a different cohort of students. In this cohort of students, we had more students with disabilities, a larger number in this cohort. So we're definitely proud of the work that they did. With this cohort, we did, they did meet growth, right? And, and that's huge for this cohort. Our black, you see the, the doubling of those numbers for our black population in science. And our white subgroup went down, but our EDS population, they did grow in science. From last year to this year, we're continuing to maintain, we met expected growth. We are continuing to work towards that and making, exceeding growth. That is our goal. But we did make growth this past school year. We continue to stay out of low performance status and we're proud of that. Although we went up one point, it's a one point growth, right? We still grew. We were from a fifty-six to a fifty-seven. Last year was my first full year at Southern Pines Elementary School. So we're definitely continuing to work, just knowing that when I came, the culture was a little broken. So me coming in and trying to fix that, to mend that, to build trust was a huge thing. And so that's what we were working on last year, and we are in a great place now. We're, we're doing well. They, they are doing well. So our first goal is increasing our overall grade level performance by ten percentage points. We're looking to go from our overall from a fifty-one to a sixty-one percent. Our reading from forty-eight to fifty-eight, math from fifty-three to sixty-three, and our science from fifty-six to sixty-six. And some of those action steps that we're going to put into place to make this happen is using multiple data points, right? Really looking at and drilling into the data. What does our data say? How are our students are performing and how we meet them where they are? That's some of the things that we're going to be looking at. And when we're looking at that data, how are we going to restructure or reteach in core? Because that's going to be important, because our main thing is teaching students on grade level and then using our station work to differentiate instruction. So really making sure that we have our data meetings once a quarter to make sure that we are identifying students' strengths and looking for those weaknesses and where to attack it from there. Our second action step is utilizing our instructional coach. We are so happy to have an instructional coach this year. Last year, we did not have one. So this year, we are so excited about that. So utilizing her to help with those, unpacking of those standards. What is the standard telling us? What is it wanting our teachers to teach? What is it wanting our students to do? And making sure that we are ensuring that high-yield learning strategies are present in each lesson. That's from vocabulary, from summarizing, that's from using higher-order critical thinking questions. All of that is present with, within the lesson. And then lastly, administrators using a walkthrough tool to make sure that feedback is given and that our stations are rigorous and differentiated. Like I said before, meeting students where they are. Rigorous, meaning challenging. We want to make sure that we are challenging students where they are and that work is aligned, right, to the standard. Our goal two, this is our meeting growth goal. We want to exceed growth. That is our focus, exceeding growth, going from meeting to exceeding growth. And some of those action steps for goal two. Last year, we did not start off with providing training. So we want our teachers to do something or implement a resource, right, a strategy, but we did not provide that training last year. So this year, we really hit the ground running and making sure that we had all of our ducks in a row and that we provided training for reading and math materials that's going to be used during intervention for our students. So we've done that already in first semester or first quarter, and we have one more to do. So our teachers, we, we want them to do something, but we also have to provide that background knowledge for them. So that's what we've been doing here in the first quarter, and our teachers are excited about that. Also during PLTs once a month, this is our MTSS meetings, making sure that we are meeting every four to six weeks to discuss our students that are in tier two, tier two and tier three. How are their performance, looking at the progress monitoring data to determine if we need to make adjustments, if we need to make shifts in order for them to get what they need in reading, math, and science. And last but not least, our reading interventionist last year, it was geared more toward K-1, but this year, I decided to spread the love and make sure that we have reading interventionists for each grade span. So we have a reading interventionist in K-1, one in two, three, and then a reading interventionist in four or five. Although we looked to hire a reading interventionist for fourth and fifth grade last year, we did not get any applicants. But this year, we were blessed to have someone to apply, and we have that in place. So hitting the ground running, like I said before, and we have our interventions going strong. Our goal three is one of our subgroup goals, making sure that we are continuing with decreasing the achievement gaps that are present within our students with disability subgroup, our black subgroup, and our economically disadvantaged subgroup. Some of our action steps for that is, once again, grade level teams meeting every forty-six weeks to discuss behavior and attendance for our tier two, tier two and tier three students. Making sure that we are developing intervention support plans for those students who may have attendance issues or who may be having behavior issues. I think that was one of the main goals when I came in and talked to students, when I talked to staff, when I talked to parents. It was behavior. How do we support behavior in the building? And so that was one of our goals last year, is to make sure that we were supporting behavior and making it a better culture environment for our students to make them want to come to school, right? And making it a place for our teachers who want to come to work. That's also important. And so we did a lot with implementing our PBIS strategies, really focused heavily on our PBIS action plan. And some, like a great thing to share, one of the goals that we had last year was focused on our teacher working condition survey. And one of those was managing student conduct. So students at this school follow rules and will increase from a fifty-six to seventy percent, and we exceeded that goal. And so on our teacher working condition survey, it was at an eighty percent. So we know that we are really hitting the ground running and doing the work. Another one of those was school administrators consistently enforce rules for conduct will increase from forty-three percent to eighty percent, and we went to ninety percent. And then the last one, school administrators supporting teachers' efforts to maintain discipline in the classroom will increase from fifty-eight percent to eighty percent, and teachers said that was at a ninety-two percent. So the job that we had last year was really focusing on those processes, those procedures, making sure that the culture, there was a positive learning environment for our students because as you know, when there's disruptions, learning is not taking place. And so we want to remove that, that barrier to open it up for our students to be able to learn. And another thing to note, that, that question about my school is a good place to work and learn, work and learn, went from an eighty-six to a ninety-five percent. So we're really excited about that. So that lets you know that our PBIS action strategies and steps are working. And so this year already, we've already had a fifty-one percent decrease in behavior referrals. And so that lets you know that our kids are staying in school, they're not being suspended, which is huge, right? That they are being able to learn and grow in the classroom, right, and not being sent home. So that's a, a really a good success and a plus. And I thank my teachers for being consistent and positive and showing students that I care and I want you to be here. And then lastly, one thing that we're going to do before June twenty twenty-six is implement a book study, Word Nerd. And we're looking at increasing vocabulary instruction, just to make sure that our teachers have the proper tools in order to have that within their instructional routine.
Members of the Board. Questions. Ms. Caldwell?
Sorry. So do you have a lot of new teachers this year?
We have about six new teachers.
Okay, so not, not too bad.
Not too bad. It's about the same.
Okay, yeah. And I was, I was going to say, I think you did a wonderful job when you came in. You, you had a, you had a lot to accomplish. You've done that, you're growing, and so I think you're on the right track, and it shows especially in your teacher working condition. That's huge, so.
Mr. Benway?
Please. First of all, congratulations on your progress. Great, great stuff. I remember one of the first, the first time we visited you, you were getting ready to get ready, pretty much. And congratulations on that. And I was going to ask about discipline also. Did you have, how many major issues did you have this year roughly?
So far?
Yes.
So far, so like, for example, compared to September last year, we had sixteen. This year in September, we only had eight. So it was a fifty percent decrease, right? And October last year, we had twenty office referrals, and then this year, we only had four. So that was an eighty percent decrease. So we're continuing to decrease. We're continuing to use like restorative practices to make sure that we are drilling down to the problem because a lot of times our students have conflict, and it comes from the community and it comes into the school. So really looking at that restorative justice and how do we problem solve and mend fences so our students can stay in the classroom.
How's tardiness?
It's, it's still an issue, but not as bad as last year. So our students, our parents are doing their best to get there and bring their kids to school on time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah. I, Conette, I am so impressed. You're doing a great job. But I love it that you're supporting your teachers so much. I mean, that is so important. And who wants to come to school and teach a kid, a bunch of kids that are rowdy and don't listen and, and there's no education that way? But you're doing a phenomenal job with your, your teachers, and that is so important. Great. Congratulations.
They're important.
Yes, and your scores are, your scores are improving, and you're going to do great. I'm so happy.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Could you explain to me how you're reaching out to the community and how they're, they're more, you're inviting them more and they're getting more engaged? Will you go a little deeper into that?
Right. So I've had several community members come in and introduce themselves and talk to me about different projects that they may want to do. I just had one gardening club come in to talk about how they can come in and provide like a pollinator garden, you know, for our students. The community involvement is super huge. We have a lot of businesses, because as you know, in Southern Pines, there's a lot of businesses that surround us, and they always offer up their services to us. So we have a lot of great community support. And so I make sure that when I'm invited to things to come out, that I am going to those things to show my support for them as well.
Thank you. You're, you're heading in the right direction.
We're definitely, yeah. Continuous improvement.
That's right.
The, the one thing that, when everyone from teachers to bus drivers come to us and they say that their, their concern generally deals with discipline and having a good environment and backing up the teachers, you know, in, in, in their disciplinary procedures. And it seems that you're doing that, but you're also doing it without a lot of office referrals. So you must be, you're, once again, you're doing something right. And I know that there was a, there was a culture, I don't want to say it was a problem because I don't, wouldn't call it a real problem, but what you're doing is a vast improvement for Southern Pines Elementary. So, so we thank you very much. We, we, we thank you for making such an improvement to the school. And, uh, Dr. Locklear, we thank both you, your staff, and everyone, everyone involved for, for really, really showing us some examples of some fantastic schools.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Levy. And I'm going to see first if Dr., before I get fired up here and start reflecting a little bit, I'm going to see if Dr. Metcalf has any summary comments.
Just want to thank Dr. Pratt and appreciate your work as well and great presentation. Yes, just in summary again, appreciate the Board's engagement. I know two, two almost full days of, of meetings is a lot to ask, so we appreciate your time and your engagement over the last two days and your questions. Just as a reminder, we will be bringing the school improvement plans as well as the school safety plans for your approval at the November twelfth Board meeting. Safety plans review will happen in closed session, of course. Thank you.
Let me reiterate, thank you, Dr. Pratt. We appreciate your leadership, appreciate the hard work of your team. I'm seeing that difference as I walk with you through the school, seeing the community being involved in the school, reading the kindergartners, et cetera, when I was there last time. So just appreciate everything you're doing there, and I'm, I'm excited to see the continued growth of Southern Pines. So thank you, ma'am. And I also just say in, in summary, I too, when I'm sitting here listening to our great principals and teams talk about the work they're doing in their schools, it's definitely inspiring to me. Our theme this year is deliberate optimism, enjoy the mile you're in. And this certainly inspires me to have deliberate optimism about where we're going as a school district. That we're committed, the Moore County Schools Way is a commitment to, to continuous improvement. And we will have continuous improvement this year, and I'm fired up about that. I'm deliberately optimistic. And enjoy the mile is about sometimes stepping back, taking a breath, and taking in what you're observing, what you're seeing, or the experience you're having. And over the last two days, I've enjoyed this mile of seeing the hard work of our entire Moore County Schools team, our principals, our staffs, our central service staff, every employee, team member, from our operations side of the equation, finance, human resources, everyone's in this together. Because without that, we can't have great teachers, or we can't have air conditioning on, or we can't have a good, our kids fed and ready to learn. All of that matters and makes a difference. And I'm just really proud of Moore County Schools. So I am deliberately optimistic about where we're heading this year, and I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work and the Board for their engagement and support. So with that, I have nothing else to say before I get too fired up, Mr. Levy. Thanks.
Final Board comments. Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Benway? Ms. Bruno?
Yes, I, I think our principals are absolutely awesome. I have really enjoyed the last few days. I think it's been tremendous. So thank you, everybody.
I don't normally say very much in closing, but this time I'm, I'm going to take a few minutes to reflect myself on Ms. Gettard and the, the hard work that her and her team have put in over the past few years have given us excellent curriculum to give to our teachers that trickles down effectively everywhere. And also to Dr. Locklear, because I, I've noticed, we, we sat here through twelve presentations of twelve schools the past two year, or, excuse me, the past two days. And out of twelve schools, nine of them have new principals that you chose and that you put there. And Ms. Bruno said many times, listening to the principals talking about building their teams and building their leaders, putting strong leaders around them, that's a sign of a good leader. And you have done that, sir. And I am fired up to be able to support you and, and the things that you do. I think you're an incredible leader and you deserve many thanks and gratitude for what you're doing for Moore County Schools.
Thank you. And let me, let me echo that. The one thing, as I said before, that I'm learning is, obviously, Moore County is a diverse county. High Falls is different from Southern Pines. Pinehurst is different from Cameron and the like. And yet, and every school is different, and the cultures are different. Yet, you allow them, Dr. Locklear, and, and, and encourage them, you and your staff, to, to, to have their own culture so that it benefits the students using that culture. And that, I think that's the reason why we are number ten in the state of North Carolina out of a hundred and fifteen school districts. We're number ten in both academics and vocational education. And so it's very much a success, and, and I think we're all, we're all very proud of the work that's being done in Moore County Schools. So we thank you.
Thank you, sir. An incredible team of leaders. Thank you.
Okay. Is there, is there anything further? Okay. If not, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay, hold on, favor I? I? We adjourned.